Good evening. It's 7 o'clock. We have a quorum. We'll call the planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Tom Kelly of Northeast Solar.
Yeah, I'm just making the second trip back here about six weeks ago, not just four weeks ago. I dropped off the information for the administrative review.
Right.
I have a couple more supplemental items that you guys are looking to see.
Okay.
Specifically a photo of the array and also...
Where is this going to be again?
Lawrence Plain Road.
Okay.
Also, there's some nice photos showing how between the, basically the house and the trees on the street, you're not going to be able to see it.
Whose name and project is that?
Jonathan King is the customer.
What's the street address?
26 Lawrence Plain Road.
Who the heck's that?
You go to plot plane or...
Well, that was in the last packet.
Right. Would you have it with you or something?
No.
Oh.
Oh, that's Ray Nuxey.
You guys said you were going to...
Oh, that's right. He's from Chelmsford.
Just Lawrence Chelmsford.
Okay.
So the highlights are again, it's a, you know, small-scale residential and the earth anchors we use don't use any ounce of concrete, which we know obviously is important. And that's kind of what this talks about a little bit too. This is a stamped construction engineer's letter for the project. So these two documents with what I dropped off the last time, you said would fit the bill. So now we're just waiting for feedback slash we think we've checked all the boxes and hoping to apply for the building permit.
Economic courtesy. Do you go to the neighbors and talk to them and just show them what you're going to do it?
No.
You don't do that?
No.
Why?
Do we have to?
No.
I just ask you if you did.
No, especially in a setting like this frankly where a neighbor isn't even going to know it's going in or see it once it's there.
He's not going to know once it's there.
It's still required that you have to talk to the neighbor. But we received no feedback from anybody on this.
Okay.
And none of town boards rather that we distributed to them.
So that triggers we can apply or?
We don't, we need to go, we still have to go through, we just need to go through the details here.
Okay, so administrative review, it's been out for into departmental review, it's ripe for its decision, the required documents were provided. And let's see, we know there's liability insurance because it's a dwelling, no site control, utility notification, in this case doesn't really concern us, there won't be any land clearing, no permeability, no soil, soil cord, wildlife corridors, not any fencing around this.
Okay.
Setbacks at least 50 feet from the nearest property line except along Route 47 designated scenic byway where it's 100 feet back.
Yeah, about good 130 if not up to 150 off 47 and then the closest property line is, would be like 54 feet away.
It's just the setback from the public way is longer on Route 47.
Definitely.
Because it's a designated scenic byway.
Yep. We're happy to keep it that way.
Parking not applicable.
So I'll make a motion to find that it satisfies administrative review. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion passes. Yeah, please.
Super.
So there's no review, there's no field period.
Okay.
The building is expected tomorrow to get a, request a building permit.
Great.
And he can, question he can call Bill to verify.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Question from Luis Rillo. Oh, we don't need all these.
No?
No. What do you know? Take one for the file.
Okay.
And the rest. Okay. Very much.
Thank you.
Come on.
Thank you.
Melissa Teff.
Hello, I'm Melissa Teff and I live at 112 Stockbridge Street in Hadley. And I'm a full-time psychotherapist. I worked in Northampton doing counseling with adults and I'm getting a little bit older and I'd like to move my full-time practice from Northampton to my home. And so at my home on Stockbridge Street, I have an office that has its own entrance and I have two spaces to park in. I work full-time, so I'm working like 8:00 to 5:30 and, but people will be able to walk from the parking area into the office.
So you want to apply for home occupation?
Yes. Yep. I've heard from it. I've talked to the Butters and they're fine with that and very supportive.
How do you spell your last name?
T-E-F-F-T.
And did you say psychotherapy?
I did.
So, okay.
Yep.
That's right. Are you sure I put you down for right?
Yes.
Okay, good. You'll need, this is home occupation, so you'll need, we need a list of the Butters on mailing labels, two sets.
Okay.
You can get that through the assessor's office anytime during the day.
Okay.
And then come back in two weeks and apply for the site for the review with all the information.
Okay.
And we'll set up a public hearing today.
Cool.
You're supposed to put the labels on envelopes.
On envelopes, two for each one. Alright. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Scott?
Me, Scott.
Keaton?
Keaton.
Keaton.
Good evening. I am a contractor in Northampton and we are working at 300 Venture Way for Pearson Systems, which is a corporation down here. I'm sorry, I don't recall which one of you gentlemen I spoke with, but we were, okay. So hoping to have you guys just take a look at this. We are currently doing a large-scale renovation in the building, inside the building for 80 occupants. And Pearson has decided that they would like to add six handicap parking spaces. They're not required by code, but they want to do that because the existing handicap spaces are a little bit far away from this population.
Where are we going to include it?
That parking lot there is this little, is this gray area here.
Okay. I'm going to take a little bit of... What building, Scott, is it?
This is Building 300. It's Pearson Systems.
Which, which, which one though? The old one or the new one?
The old one.
Okay.
The old one. So the new...
The old and the new, this is, this is for the, so this is, this is the original Pearson.
Correct.
And then they came in to build this.
ADS?
Yes.
Yes.
National Evaluation System.
Right, okay.
And they came in to build this one, which they connected with a skyline.
So this is, this is National Evaluation Systems?
Yes. Yeah, I think they're, they go by Pearson Evaluation Systems.
Yeah, yeah, the other one way, 116 over here somewhere.
116 is out here.
Over here, okay.
North Maple is over there.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't as built from the original project. I just wanted to get some sort of site plan. I could show you guys, you know, where this was in relation to...
I don't see a problem with adding six, what's a six handicap space?
Six handicap parking spaces.
I don't need to leave them.
So you're moving, just putting them...
They're, they're in addition to some that are here, but this group that's now going to be in this part of the building, they don't want to have to have those handicap, the, inside this building, there are isolated areas for security and unfortunately these handicap folks won't be able to get to that area internally, so they would have to go all the way around and that's, that's why they're adding them.
No change in use?
No, no.
There is an issue that has come up, because I've heard from three lawyers on this one. This building, and I have the file with me actually for the new renovation, or the expansion building. So this building was built 14 feet off of the property line and everyone was trying to figure out what's up with that. But I went back to the file and we were told at the time that since Pearson or National Evaluation was going to own it all.
Right.
It was going to be merged.
That's what I remember that.
But for some reason it is still being carried as two parcels and there is some concern that there is a zoning violation because of the lack of setback. It doesn't affect this building.
Okay.
It just relates to that.
Gotcha.
I gather they must be refinancing to make this all happen or something.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because...
I'm not, I'm not aware of anything over there. Our, our project's confined to basically the first floor of this building here on that side.
So I'll make a motion to approve additional handicap parking spaces as a minor amendment.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion passes. Yeah, please.
Thank you very much. And shall I take these with me?
Yes.
Okay.
So this, so we can build our, our file, can you email a PDF of that to the Planning at Hadley MA?
Sure.
Which is on our website. You don't have to write it down, you can slide it.
I can do that in the morning?
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
And I suppose I'll reach out to Tim, to the building inspector, just for an amendment to our building permit for this work. I just wanted to do this first.
Yes, yeah. And again, same thing, if he has any questions, you can contact Bill during the day.
Okay, very good. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are trying to open up a restaurant in the Big Y Plaza in Amherst. The building in Amherst, the plan is to have a walk-in cooler out back, a walk-in cooler out back, which the town cuts through the parking lot, right at the building.
What do you mean a walk-in cooler?
A walk-in cooler where...
So you want to add a walk-in cooler in back?
Yes, outside, yeah.
And, but the restaurant's going to be from the inside of the building?
Yes, yes.
How big is the walk-in cooler going to be?
It's going to be 70 by 14. A cooler in the freezer.
How far are you from the back boundary?
It's going to be right up against the building.
How far is that?
Now, there's a parking lot back.
Yes.
So how close is it?
Because this building gets out back, so there's quite a ways from the back.
There's quite a ways.
From the back boundary line. Just come in to us with a, with a drawing of what you want to do.
Okay.
And then in two weeks, we'll be here. We meet the first and third Tuesday every month. So just come back in two weeks. We can deal with that with administrative without going through any kind of special permits.
Okay.
Because it's a very small addition.
You just want to see what it looks like.
Just want to see what it looks like, okay?
Okay.
Just a, just a regular plot plan looking down. I'm sure you can, you probably need that for the building inspector anyways.
Yes, okay.
So just bring us that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else ready for administrative? Oh, Attorney Barrett and Susan. Come on down.
Paul, do you have something?
Yeah, I just have this little light.
Oh.
Yeah, he has something.
Oh, you got the sign?
Yeah, just a sign. Lights. This one, the lights, they're the, we're thinking to put in there.
This is going to be facing down?
Yeah.
So like that? Okay. Yeah, that's the, kind of what you have on the East Street property goes out more.
I know, I'm going to change the lights.
Okay.
Yeah, there are enough. You want this to be signed.
It's going to go on our file.
Yep.
And this is the, this is signed.
Do you have dimension on how big this is?
So this is going to be, be like...
116 to 48 square feet.
Is that sign going to be lit? Any lights on it?
So maybe put those lights in.
Are these, are those the things that will be lit all night long?
Not really. You can shut them off.
The what?
You can shut it off. If you're saying we're going to shut them off.
You guys want these lights shining on this sign all night long?
Well, they're not supposed to shine across the street.
No, but I mean, if you want the sign lit up all night long.
This is always a concern for neighbors because of security versus the, the neighbors looking at it. If the neighbors have a complaint, certainly we're going to have to adjust the, he's going to have to adjust the light. But on the other hand, you want to keep the, the lights and people going to be stealing parts off the car.
This would be the only business on that lot with lights on, on that street?
The only business on the street, yeah.
Cars or any of those, they don't have the lights in them.
They got the lights in the back.
Yeah, he has.
And then the greenhouses have a lot of lights. But if the, the neighbors are concerned, if it does shine across the street, well, you know, because they were here and you were agreeing.
Yeah, yeah. I'll talk to them.
So what is the side dimension? 30, 48 square feet. Your sign's, is that going to be the only sign or is it going to be with you?
It's too big.
It's too big. The size is too big. It's going to be 40 square feet.
Okay, so we're going to put 40 now. We can just change it now.
Okay.
What, what's that end up with?
40... 48. So he made it.
I'll make it 40.
Well, he can figure out what he wants. One's not bigger than 40.
Downsize it.
Downsize it to 40 square feet.
Is that going to be the only sign? You're not going to have muffler work, brake work?
No, no.
He's showing.
So you're going to make a motion on that to accept that sign?
I'm not going to make a motion. I'm not participating.
Oh, no, you're not participating? Okay. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the sign for exotic auto repair, provided that it does not exceed 40 square feet. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes for 01 abstention.
You don't have to come back here again then. If you want to close out or tell the board.
Yeah, I'll take the file.
And don't be shining lights on your neighbors, okay?
And this, this is for, he's going to be posting this in his office?
I have a...
He's got one.
So this is for our file?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I have the file.
So that's it?
Yep.
On the block here.
I think you have much for the...
Yep. Okay, now Attorney Barrett against...
I think this is his phone.
Oh, yeah.
Sir, sir!
What do you think?
Sorry, last time.
Okay. Just for the sake of completeness, I did five copies of our original bylaw, but went on the warrant, and five copies of the 113 comments from KT Law. Changed by the letter.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. I noticed, I noted, we tabled both the bylaw and the public consumption. This is what was given to the town administrator, published for the public consumption, and this is what was published about, for some reason, about half of it. I don't know why or how that happened, but I believe this is the revised, that was what you recommended without all the comments taken out. It was like a page in a little bit. If the Greek book has...
Is that the general bylaw tip?
That was the general bylaw, public consumption, you call it like a public consumption and open container were combined into one.
Right.
And that was, when it was rewritten, that was what KT Law recommended.
We did, because the original, we put the public consumption, we enhanced it where the public consumption bylaw was.
Right.
And then we put the enforcement and the others.
Right, so we put it together.
Yeah.
And that's what it was. And for some reason, when it was printed in the warrant, it was different.
I noticed, yeah.
So this is okay to put into the Springtown meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, those are the KT comments. Okay, well, do you have your own copy?
I did, yeah.
I got your copy.
I have mine.
Jim, is that going to be our responsibility to present it as the planning board? Is it going to be the selectmen or the town administrators?
I think it's going to be between myself as one member of the planning board and the police chief, because he was the one that, I, it was done from Susan through the marijuana bylaw and she, they recommended we also adopt the public consumption. And the police chief said, we combine it with our open container bylaw. And so we gave it to KT Law. They made some changes and...
Who normally presents bylaws?
Whoever proposes them.
Whoever proposes them. So we're proposing it on behalf of the police department at their request. So we will present it with the police chief, so that we'll present it, but as far as answering questions, I mean, the police department's going to have to answer it because that's a little beyond our capabilities. Nobody would want to get into make something that's not correct.
So one other thing, this was just submitted on behalf of Psychowski, is showing the land area required for cultivation, which is just a couple of graphics that the setbacks would work.
This is his idea?
No, that was just, the way that gentleman...
The first page shows the difference.
If you were to put the building into a 300-foot setback, that's the distance required for, that's property required to do it.
Works out to 18 and a half acres to have 300-foot setbacks from every property line. So, but...
See, are we going to go over these one by one or are we going to take the major issue first?
Well, I think we can kind of go page by page where you find something that really jumps out as, you know, why was that done? Does it have to be that way? Stuff like that.
Yeah, so can you highlight for us, Joel, what the, what were the, you know, some of these are just editorial, like moving a comma, and some were taking out stuff that we had intentionally put in and we just weren't sure of the rationale of why it was done the way it was done. So...
Are you guys, you're all done with this first page? That's the public consumption one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going, we are right at the zoning bylaw itself.
Okay. So I just, yes, I just have a question on that.
Okay.
In the enforcement, there was a recommendation for $300 fine.
Yes, we have.
Are you going to keep that?
Yes.
Okay, because, just because they had commented that they weren't sure about it, but they did note that the attorney general has approved that in some other cases and I know that's where Larry had got that from originally.
Excuse me, when you're talking, could you tell us what page you're on?
Okay, I'm on the public consumption page, on the second.
I don't believe you have it.
Okay, that's why I couldn't find it.
Okay.
Under enforcement. I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Okay.
Yeah, this is, the bylaw as revised has a $300 penalty.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if they don't like it, throw it out. They'll come back and that's what we've got to do. At least we try and, you know, that's it. Okay.
So now I have to...
All right, why don't I then just go page, page by page? I won't comment on all of these, but...
Which one are you using yours?
I'm actually, I've got two things in front of me. I've got the warrant article in front of me.
Okay.
Which I printed out for you.
Yeah, it's just here.
That's this one.
Yep.
And this one's yours?
And then this is their comments.
Okay, that's the one you're going to deal with?
Well, I'm going to, yeah, more, yes, right. They notes on both actually. So just for starters, you know, we, we made one comment at the very beginning. So if you look at the table of uses, you use the initial SP, but the bylaw already uses SPB.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the standard. So where you have SP, you'll want to just stick with SPB because that's the way it is elsewhere on the table. You know, for a special permit from the planning board, of course. So then a couple of, so Craft Marijuana Cooperative, we've highlighted, and Marijuana Micro Business. All we're saying there is you can keep it in there, but they are by definition a subset of cultivation as cultivation is defined, and as you'll see, you treat them the same. Like, you can leave it in, but we're just highlighting that comment if you were looking at it.
So which one, that's microbusiness?
So the very first one in the table is Craft Marijuana Cooperative.
Yes.
And then the fourth, fifth one down, Marijuana Micro Business. They should be shaded, right? Whenever we, is it shaded in your table or not? Well, anyway.
Shows up on mine.
So, yeah.
Maybe if you don't have color.
So the comment we made, do you have the comments? Yes, so the comment...
Would it help if these things were numbered?
Well, the, the comments in your column are numbered on the right. So you see comment NJC 2 and NJC 4. So those two comments just say it's a subset of cultivation. You don't need to list it as a separate use. Again, it's harmless, but...
We don't want to be redundant, so if you think we should take it out because it's already included, we'll take it out.
Yeah, as I say, it's up to you.
Trying to figure out what the difference is when there's no difference.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there are differences between them, but when you regulate marijuana cultivator, you're regulating these as well.
Okay.
And as I said, if you look at how you've treated them in the table, you treat them the same anyways, so there'd be another reason to take it out. But by regulating marijuana cultivator, you are regulating Craft Marijuana Cooperative and you are regulating the Marijuana Micro Business.
I have a question. There's some question on that? So on the cultivation, you can't obtain the product, but on the, but on the cooperative, you can. So some place in this bylaw, you could bring in 2,000 pounds of marijuana to the facility. I think for the residents of Hadley, that's a big difference of marijuana coming in versus marijuana being grown on site. And I would just ask that we keep it separate because I think that makes a difference.
Yeah, you could certainly do that and you're absolutely right about that. Again, they're regulated the same, but there is that distinction. At some point, you might decide to regulate it differently, so you could keep it in. I'm not saying they're identical, but I'm saying that at core, they're both cultivation, but...
Yes.
Are you saying that marijuana grown in South Deerfield can't be sold in Hadley?
No.
No, the point is the, the, the microbusiness can import marijuana.
Can't?
Can, they can. And then they can grow their own as well and then process it on site.
All right.
So that is a difference. So it's got nothing to the retail end. It's still just the growing and processing. Because a grower, by the way, this isn't necessarily well-understood, a grower is allowed to process on site.
Right.
You know, just as somebody grows apples can make apple cider and people with tomatoes can make tomato sauce, whatever. So a grower, under the law, the regulations, can do some processing. They can't do manufacturing. So manufacturing primarily consists of taking the marijuana, processing it in some way, and then putting it into whether it's a brownie or a cookie or a gummy bear kind of thing. Gummy bears specifically aren't allowed, but something like that. That's the manufacturing side, but a certain amount of processing happens just as with any crop, you do a certain amount of...
How are you going to dry it out, Joe? You're going to hang it in tobacco shed? You're going to use, what's the intent?
There's several ways it could be done. One could be done, we, for instance, we work
One could be done, we, for instance, we work with Raw Food Central in Connecticut that, that does kale chips. We strip kale and ship it to them. We had a truck down there today, and they have controlled units that, that dry it. That would probably be the best way. There's a little computer in the programs, the temperature rise, and, you know, just cycles to dry properly. That would probably be the most secure and effectively advantaged of that. It could also just be hung up to dry in the same hoop houses where it's grown.
Good point. Those are the only significant points on, on the first page. Oh, yeah, so on the next page, purposes, we just suggested, for concise language, if you will. We actually have a slight typo in our language. So if you look in that first full paragraph on the top of the second page, our new text is all underlined. And in the last line that we underline, it says "natural and built environment." It should be "built environment" of the town and its residents. Do you see where I am?
Yeah. So you, "built" should be "built"?
Yeah, yeah, that's our typo there.
And "built"?
B-I-L-T instead of D. Yeah, that should have been the word, T.
Okay.
Give me the word "built." So then getting into definitions, so actually, what went in the warrant? So some changes got made, I think maybe from some of our earlier comments, about the warrant article. So our, do I have to write one here? So you see, our first comment on definitions, we crossed out cannabis and put marijuana. But the article that went into the warrant, we already had changed it to marijuana cultivation.
So, and why is that change there?
Because that's how it's used throughout the statute of regulation. Just trying to, a lot of our comments here are to keep it consistent with the statutory terminology and the regulations, the CCC regulations. And one of the things that happens here is the, because with your, your medical marijuana bylaw, you used some terms that were statutory, the RMD and the ONMD, whatever it was. So a few places here, we'll have to clean that up.
So cannabis cultivation is what we should be using?
No, marijuana cultivation. So it's confusing because by the, the, what we commented on here, the marked up one, we'd made some of these comments earlier, and so they got made by the time it went into the warrant. So that, that change is already made, is all I'm saying. And so then throughout that definition, we...
Gee, there was so many things that... Okay, nevermind.
So that, so that, your definition of marijuana cultivation is, is fine as is. As I said, a lot of these changes were already made. So, and then the next one, we're just saying, see, comment above, these terms could be eliminated. You could rely on state law definitions. Oh, right, so the first comment on the second page is simply saying, a lot of these terms that add a lot of text to the bylaw are in either state law or the Cannabis Controlled Commission regulations. So, I mean, a lot of towns want to put it all in the bylaw so people can read it all there. But on the other hand, it adds like two or three pages to the bylaw. So you could just say, as defined in general laws and...
We still have to comply with the state statute, right?
Right.
So why are we duplicating that?
That's our point. That's what we're saying.
Well, some people might think it would be useful to have that information.
Exactly.
I could understand that, because not everybody is going to know to look at the state regulations.
Well, they would have to.
I think at this level, we can expect that they should be looking at the state regulations.
Right, they have to, certainly, yeah.
Because we're not going to have anyone, as opposed to someone seeking a building permit or site plan approval, we have a whole range from Mountain Farm or Hampshire Mall down to that guy wanted to open a garage. They were all subject to site plan approval, but there are different levels of sophistication. By the time someone comes to us, they have to be sophisticated enough to have already navigated through the regulatory structure, so...
So under definition, should we be, excuse me, should we be referencing 935 CMR 500 or master in the laws?
Both. So, I mean, here, we noted, so actually, the CMR is more detailed.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's what we noted here. Actually, it said for cultivation is not defined in the CMR, but...
But they can find it at both sites?
Yes, or one or the others. As I said, in some cases, it's more detailed in the regulations.
So why don't we just offer them both sites and let them figure it out?
Yeah.
And when they come in and say, you know, you're aware of this, you've got to comply with this.
Yeah.
So it's 935 CMR 500?
Yes.
And...
And, so you know what we can do if you want? We can go through, because not all of these are defined there.
Oh, okay.
So we can go through, mainly it's the ones, so cultivation...
Is not defined?
Is, yeah, the ones that are cultivation is, what marijuana is. Cannabis and marijuana products, again, cannabis can come out, but is defined. Ceases to operate, we'll talk about, is not defined. The commission, I think you want to leave in. Host community agreement, you leave in. Craft Marijuana Cooperative is certainly defined. Hemp is defined. Independent testing laboratory is defined. Licensee, you keep in. Manufacturers defined, cultivators defined, establishment's defined, micro business, so forth. So I'd say three-quarters of these, at least, are defined. So that would shorten this by three pages. So you'll have, we'll flag...
Well, if they're not all in, defined in that CMR 500, why don't we just list both sections of where they're defined in?
Well, then they may not all be defined, is what Joel's saying. So we may, may need to leave in several definitions.
Right, and so what we'll just, we'll go through, and for those that already are defined, we'll simply say C, SNOS, chapter 94G, section 2, that's the definition section, and 935 CMR 500 for the definition.
I, I kind of tend to agree with Joel in putting the CMR 500, because remember the very small quantity generator for hazardous waste? The state regulations change all the time, so if we had it in our bylaw, we'd have to amend it all the time. Whereas referring to the state regulation makes it clear that it has been amended, and they should know, and we should know.
Yeah. All right, so we'll go through, and we'll identify those. Then as to the other definitions, now, in page three, ceases to operate. So here you define it, you say marijuana establishment closes and does not transact business for a period greater than 60 days with no substantial action taken to reopen. But if you go to one of the last pages here, it's actually a full year.
30.4, 0.5, 0.4, 0.1. Marijuana establishment ceases operation for 365 days.
30. what?
30.4.
It's on page nine. If you look at lower right, we've got page numbers.
Page eight or page nine, depending on your, on your number.
Oh. 30.4, 30.5, 30.4.
It appears.
Where are they at?
Yeah.
Why didn't they give them a whole year to cease operations?
Well, what, if you, for example, what if somebody grows it outside? Is this, you know, six months, or three, what's it, three months, or...
Well, in one place, under the definition, it's 60 days.
60 days, 60 days. So if you grow it outside, not in greenhouse, but outside, 60 days, you cease operation.
I'm guessing they meant two different...
During the winter.
I'm guessing they meant two different things.
So you lose your permit?
That's what, that's the question.
You know. So I'm, I'm guessing that the marijuana, ceases to operate may reference the retail end of it.
That's, I'm sure that's what we lived.
Okay?
Yeah, you're right.
And the 365 days references the rest of them. Because growing, I mean, but say a farmer, let's say they were to open grow.
Right.
There is going to be roughly six months of the year where you're not going to grow. So that's not ceasing to operate, that's just impossible to grow.
So where were the two references?
So first, then the definition...
Ceases to operate, which is on page two. Your page two, Bill.
No, it's the second definition on page two.
Okay.
So we can just add retail in there if you want?
Yeah, I think that we just need to define it that way.
So, yeah, here he uses the term marijuana establishment, which of course is everything.
So I got a 365, there's 30.4, 0.5, 0.4, 0.1.
So keep that.
I don't think the person that's growing this stuff should have any limitation at all as to when he, when he can't grow it.
Well, it depends on the kind of growing.
Yeah, you know, he may make, make a market decision that he doesn't want to grow it this year because there's an overabundance of marijuana in the system. But he can't say he doesn't lose, should lose his permit because of that.
But what if the state says this is the law? What do we do, override the state law?
The state actually is silent, I believe. I don't recall seeing anything in the state. There's nothing in the law, anyway. I don't know if there's anything in the regulations about ceasing operations.
Then why should we put something in there like this? For what reason?
Uh, well, so for instance, I mean, that's a good question. You don't have to, but at some point, because the market might take care of it. I mean, if it closes down, somebody, either the person who operated the establishment owns the land, or they're leasing it. But whatever, somebody's going to want to start taking better use of it, though.
With the circumstances that something would happen to a farmer, whatever it may be, and they're going to lose everything they invested out the winter.
A farmer should be able to make a business decision whenever he wants to. We don't want to limit that.
Yeah.
We have to be careful, would we assume a farmer? We're not, you know, it could be a...
You're talking, you're talking commercial business.
Media business. It could be, that's going to be for later discussion, but...
Yeah.
I think you've got to assume it could be either.
Yes.
It's got to cover all...
That's exactly right.
So we've got to be very careful on that.
That's, that's going to be the just main discussion we...
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So, so then for starters, anyway, for ceases to operate, sounds like what you want to say there is marijuana retailer instead of establishment.
That makes sense.
Closing marijuana retailer establishment?
Well, it's just a defined term, it's just marijuana retailer.
If somebody's selling it.
Closes and does not transact business for a period greater than 60 days with no substantial action taken to reopen. Maybe that's up to you on the sum.
That's on page two?
Yes.
Yeah, but actually, it's on three, I'm on it.
Well, the, yeah, the bill is on page two.
So was that in any kind of, like, was the special permit expiring after about two years, or...
Yes, so that's...
No.
That expires if you never start using it. Once a special permit's underway, there's no, nothing statutory that says it has to keep operating. It's just, if they don't open, you know, the first year or two years, whatever.
Ah, gotcha.
This assumes they've opened, and then, again, the way your bylaw has it, this wasn't our English. After 60 days, and then 60 days comes short.
You know, what I think is, what happens into retailer, or something comes up unexpected, and in 60 days, they lose their license or permit? I don't think that's right, Neil.
No, I don't think that's right.
What is that, the state regulation?
I don't think the state regulation covers this.
We can, we can, we can worry about these details there. Right now, we just want to get, get into these, the things, the changes that were made, and what we should do to make them better.
Yeah.
We can always come back to these, doesn't make sense to do this.
Right.
Okay?
So Susan, this is going to be perpetual employment for you?
Maybe. Right now, immediately. Because I'm going to Lanford to do the same thing tomorrow.
Probably right into our comments there.
Oh, I, yes, I am.
Well, once you get a review with, with the town council here, at least you'll be, you'll be a little slightly versed for it tomorrow.
Right, that's what I hope.
I think that's one of their towns, too.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's exactly what I need, yeah.
Yeah. Hard to look at language, but there are two people, one or two gets a look at those.
It's in a different one.
So on ceases to operate, I'm going to look, see if there's anything in the regulations. Get back to you on that. Meanwhile, yeah, bigger points, we flag the issue. The commission, you know, we just deleted language that we need. Host community agreement, so you add a definition of, maybe, to start with, you guys have community host agreement, but most of the world calls it host community agreement. So, and the statute actually uses the phrase host community.
That's fine. Yeah, I didn't write it originally either, so...
So, now, this actually, I don't, I don't know if you have it in the...
Joe, have you gone over with the selectmen with this, with the host agreement and everything?
No.
No?
No. You mean, these, I mean, there hasn't been occasion to. There was one that was entered into three years ago for medical, but it hasn't come up. It'll only come up when, if somebody applies for an adult, you know, recreational one. And, yeah, we certainly expect to be involved, we've been heavily involved in that. So actually, there's a change in language in host community agreement here, but again, you already had made this change in the version that ended up in the warrant. And it's the last phrase, it says up to a 3% community impact fee, and that's the change we recommended. Because the revenue sharing is not a good phrase to use. The impact fee is the statutory term, and one, in fact, the most controversial aspect of host community agreements. And I don't know what kind of press is getting on here, but in the Globe, you know, the industry is just banging. The Globe's got this one writer, who actually is extremely knowledgeable, but he's very much in the industry's side. And they're saying, you know, these host community agreements should be reviewed by the CCC. And the CCC voted that they didn't have any interest in doing that, and there's a lot of skirmishing going on back and forth. But the central issue is the fees that communities might be looking to collect because the statute, or the statute talks about up to 3% of a community impact fee, which has to be justified. But then in other agreements that we've been involved in, the applicants are offering more generous terms. And we call those community benefit fees. If you call it revenue sharing, it's not clear. So you want to use the community impact fee because nobody can argue with your right to get it because it's right in the statute. The so-called community benefit payments, what's a community to do when somebody shows up and says, we wanted this enormous thing, and we're going to pay an extra $250,000 a year? I haven't had a community yet that said no.
But isn't it true under the impact fee that they have to show the actual impact of this into the community?
That's right.
And what it's going to cost for policing, for maintaining, and all that?
Yeah, yeah.
They have to, they have to have something, I know we did that in a sewer department, and we listed the total cost of, of everything to verify your percentage of your impact fee.
Right, so what's going to happen is, all the communities are charging 3% upfront, and then they'll have to, you know, at the end of the year...
3% of what?
Well, the 3%, oh, yeah, 3% of whatever the revenue is. So if you're a grower, it's what you sell it. I mean, a grower doesn't sell it at retail, they sell it wholesale.
It's like a sales tax?
Yeah.
Total sales?
Yeah.
That's the 3% of total sales.
But then you can charge the retailer 3% too, right? That's right. So the total, the total impact fee could, it could actually be 9, 10, 12%. Well, I mean, theoretically, it'll only be 6, because, I mean, it could be 9, I suppose, because you've got a grower, goes to a manufacturer. Well, but it's one impact fee, I mean, it's not, well, and the, I mean, it will add up. The retailer's not going to be charged. The retailer's not gonna be charged the impact fee. And the impact fee is gonna be.
Isn't it based on the seller?
Yeah.
The final sale of that?
I think it could be the final sale rather than the farmer, because you're too many people. It's like, it's like a value, this is like a value add.
You get off of this farmer thing, because farmers aren't gonna be the only ones growing this.
The sale.
It's a sale, right.
So the farmer's gonna sell.
We put in, we put in the definitions, when I say farmer, I mean whoever grows it.
Okay, I, I have no problem charging anybody that's growing it.
I don't, I don't think a shoe smith's gonna, a shoemaker's gonna be growing it.
Of course, they don't have any, any issue with charging anybody that's growing this stuff a three percent fee. Okay, this still is.
Then a three percent to sell it after?
Absolutely. Yes.
And so, you know, you keep in mind that the wholesale number's gonna be a lot lower than a retail number. So it's not gonna be three, plus three, plus three on the same number.
Who's gonna determine the final price?
Well, it'll be, uh, it will be reported to the Cannabis Control Commission. All the stuff is.
So they're not gonna tell you what you can sell this stuff at? It's whatever the market bears, right?
Right. And from experience from other states is that it's quite up and down.
Somebody might be growing better marijuana than somebody else and that might be.
Well, you're absolutely right about that. And then, because it will all be graded, you know, people will be charging more for whatever grades people like. But I mean, the experience so far has been on just on GLOP, you know, the, I think Oregon in particular, suddenly they just had a huge amount and the prices collapsed.
Give me a.
So the commission, host community agreement, so yeah, that, so again, as I said, some of these changes you've already made. Now, we've suggested on this one, our markup, that you delete host community, but you had already done that. And just for information on hemp, earlier on, we had a comment, but just, so you know, so hemp by definition is something whose THC content is well under one percent. So it's not defined as marijuana, so it's just a regular agricultural product. The DAR, Department of Agricultural Resources, has a interim policy where they're getting, starting to regulate it. And it seems that the main purpose of the regulation is to test it, to make sure it's not actually marijuana. Because it's a plant in the same family, so I imagine it can be mistaken. You'd be looking at a field and say, oh wait, that's marijuana. You say, no, no, it's hemp, it's hemp. So they actually test it to make sure that it's hemp to some degree. Anyway, it's not something.
So how do you just get mixed in the marijuana? If it's not marijuana?
Because.
That's, no, that's an excellent point, because.
It is actually the same species.
Exactly, it's the same species as.
You don't use hemp ropes anymore, everything is.
What is hemp nylon?
Clothes? Clothes. There's a chain of stores called Hemptest. I'm sure there's one in our head. They got an oil from the seeds, a CBD oil.
Oh, hemp oil.
That, that helps like with arthritis and, and. Yeah, I mean, some of the farms, I know there's one farm in Lanesboro that sells a lot of their CBD oil.
Well, there's one, there's one farm in Hattie that approved to grow it.
Okay, hemp?
Yes.
Apparently George Washington used it because that teeth. Put it in his teeth.
Now, just as long as you're on that topic, when people are raising hemp, is it being, is it bothering people?
I haven't heard that.
I haven't heard that, no. No, again, the reason I mention is to say, the, the main reason it's in the discussion at all is that the state wants to be sure that somebody who says they're growing hemp really is growing hemp. And if they are, then they're gonna leave it alone. They're gonna wanna test it because if it turns out it's, you know.
They're eliminating a lot, loophole, Joe, so.
Yeah, I guess my point was that if people are raising hemp, and they are raising hemp in Lanesboro and in Vermont and in New York State, and it's not causing the red flags for older and things.
It's a different animal.
Does it have the same kind of aroma?
It has the same, it's just the percentage of one thing in there is different. And that's below one percent.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on.
So the host community, just because it's not needed or something?
Right, and you may wanna see the copy that actually went into the warrant, cause a lot of these changes did get me. So, okay, now, the definition of marijuana establishment.
Page three?
I'm on my page four, but you know what?
Hit our page three.
But I think this got cleaned up.
Marijuana sounds bad, it doesn't have any marks.
I'm on page three.
Oh, so here it is. So if you'll see, the first sentence is a long sentence, it's four lines long. And it ends with the phrase, except a medical marijuana treatment center. Now, the problem is, you don't use the term medical marijuana treatment center. You use R and D.
Dispensary.
Registered medical dispensary, or registered marijuana dispensary, or the O M M D, outdoor medical marijuana dispensary. So where it says except a medical marijuana treatment center, you'll wanna put or, just shorthand for R and D or O M M D and get those terms.
What are we taking out there?
No, you're not taking out, where it says a medical marijuana treatment center?
Yeah.
That's sort of a generic state term, but in your bylaw now, the section right before this one is the medical marijuana one and use the terms registered, it's registered medical dispensary, or registered marijuana dispensary. Use terms R and D and O M M D.
Dispensary is different than treatment center.
Well, the treatment center is, um, the, the state generic term is what got used there. Anyway, I'm just suggesting there that you, you put in the, the heavily specific terms after that. Then, um, research facility, we gave you different language.
So we, they originally had the language that you have recommended in there, but they did not think that that was enough. And so I found this other definition in CMR, uh, on page one twenty-three.
In the regs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where that came from, I didn't just make it up.
You mean the more detailed one?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, oh, I see. So we had, we have an entity license to engage in research projects by the commission.
That's what we originally had too.
We did, I see.
How about we, and the board request.
We thought that was a little bit too broad.
Yeah, in any event, this is gonna be one that we're gonna just refer to the statutory and.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah.
Let me just.
That's good.
Which probably puts the word back in there we had.
We'll see, yeah.
That's fine.
That's interesting, the research facility is not in the statute, must only be in the regs. All right, so we'll just go clear this now.
Do you know anything about the disposal of the products? I can see that in national law, it talks about accordance with one oh five CMR, seven two five, one oh five J. I don't know, do you know, how do they get rid of the excess marijuana? Where to fill, what is the process?
I don't know. I imagine it's in the regs. And some, let me say, you know, the stocks and branches, some people use to make, I guess, what you call lower grade products. But I don't know, you know, different growers might have different practices. Cause there is, I'm told, some amount of THC in, I mean, the buds is where the high potency is, but even in the leaves and stocks. So some people, you know, they'll be centrifuges or whatever, but try to extract something out of every part of the plant. So I don't know how different manufacturers do that.
So what are you gonna do with the stocks, Mr. Grower?
So when the law says that you cannot have any discernible part that's being disposed of going into a pile that people could pick it out. So it has to be, if you're gonna put it into compost, you'd have to break it up fully. So any popcorn buds that weren't harvested, cause they're not worth anything, they would have to be broken up in the disposal process.
So what's that mean, you gotta grind it up?
You either grind it up, or you could put it through a shredder, or you could put it through a corn chopper. So that it all broken up and you can virtually get it in down. It's a normal thing.
But it's organic matter, you could put it back into the field if you wanted to.
That's correct.
Or, or into the grow, whatever.
But nobody could go through and clean it. Unless they did try, there should be nothing there.
Yeah. You put it in the source system?
You could, but it'd be a lot of this. You wouldn't want it.
It'll be reseeding.
It's tricky to seed.
So if you look at the definition of medical marijuana treatment center, also known as a registered marijuana dispensary. So again, um, the, the town's bylaw refers to registered marijuana dispensaries and also off-site medical marijuana dispensaries. You know, the idea when you first created the bylaw was that there would be two. The off-site concept was that they didn't grow it there. And then the R and D was that they were brewing and dispensed. What's the status of your R and D?
It is, they're slowly, and I do mean slowly, clearing the site.
Wow.
They finally pulled the tanks.
The Olsonoco Station. They're, I think they're waiting for adult marijuana to be approved and then they're gonna apply for both there. That's my guess, but we have no approval there.
So you have, because, yeah, they get a leg up by being.
Yeah, but they're, we're coming up on their three years since they got their permit, so.
They're, they're, they're doing something on the site, but it's like I, to say the sales pace, I mean, I've seen sales move faster for sure.
So that's, so where it says medical marijuana treatment center, also known as a registered marijuana dispensary, R and D, you need to add the phrase and, you know, off-site medical marijuana dispensary.
So we even need to use medical marijuana treatment center because, well, unless that's in the state.
Exactly, yeah, so you may as well. Okay, and then you've already deleted those other.
The medical, Joe, they're automatically awarded a contract to sell recreational?
No, but they were given a leg up. They were allowed to be first in the door to apply, and that distinction now is gone because everybody's allowed to apply now. But the, the law allows them, the way it's written, it got changed, but it allows them to convert, or it prevents a town in its own bylaw from, it prohibits a town in their own bylaw from preventing them to convert. So once they got that site approved for medical, all other things being equal, they can convert that to a recreational.
They can do both?
They can do both.
They can.
Originally, so the best example is the old, remember the old auction barn up in Amherst?
Yeah.
So somebody came in for a medical facility, early on, it got approved. And their proposal was, and they disclosed to the town, you know, eventually we're gonna do adult recreational use, and we're gonna put a wall, remember how high that building is? They're gonna put a wall all the way up to the ceiling to separate the two. And then when the Cannabis Control Commission promulgated their regulations, they said you could have two on one site, it just had to be separated by a counter. They actually had.
They can't be, both be not-for-profit, can they?
And, and they dropped the not-for-profit requirement.
Yeah.
You don't need, the, the medical ones don't have to be not-for-profit anymore. So we're seeing all of these conversions now happening in, you know, different.
So if I could digress for just a second, when we approved the medical marijuana in the former gas station, because of the traffic studies they gave us, they compared themselves to a, like a CVS, um, a small drugstore for traffic. And we did approve it on the basis that the traffic demands would be light. But I don't think we're convinced that the traffic demands of a adult use could be accommodated on that site. So that falls under the all things being equal?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, you may hear more about that.
Okay. Well, yeah, and what was the footprint they were?
About two thousand.
Yeah, basically, they were going within the existing structure, which was a, a stock gas station with a two bay garage, two service bays.
So smaller, older.
It might right around there, like eight ninety-eight and hundred. It was an old mom and pop gas station, mom and pop repair station, it sold Smolko gas. It had, I wanna say, at least three or four owners through the year, but it's been there for a very long time.
Well, we put that in the, in the original decision, that we were not automatically going to approve, um, adult use if that ever became law because of, I think I specifically mentioned because of traffic concerns, but. You may, you may come back to.
We'll come back.
You'll hear, you'll hear about that.
Might be the next millennium. Okay, so picking up the pace, so capability, um, that very first paragraph again, we didn't highlight this, but the second sentence, this section shall not be construed to prevent the conversion of a medical marijuana treatment center licensed or registered. So here again, comma, or R and D or O M M D. See where I am? You wanna have that in there. So that, by the way, is the statutory language that can't prevent a conversion engaged in the same type of activity. So of course we're gonna be retail. So moving on, um, so at, at section thirty point four, additional requirements slash conditions, we highlighted there that first sentence, but the planning board shall be the special program granting authority slash like. That made its way into the what's in the warrant article, so that's all set. Yeah, we made a comment here that, so for instance, the term marijuana establishment is frequently capitalized, but not always. You know, some bylaws will capitalize defined terms, so you just wanna be consistent. I'd say it is most often capitalized, but not always. Now, in this section, section thirty point four, point one, point three, the hours will be set by the program granting authority. And then it says, but in no event shall an R and D or O M M D facility be open to the public. And no sale or other distribution shall occur, blah, blah, blah. It's basically setting the hours. And only suggestion here is that if you want to, that the regulation of the R and D and O M M D actually belongs in section twenty-nine, not in section thirty.
I think this should have banned the marijuana retailer.
or...
Okay, okay. So in this case, you don't need...
Don't you think?
Yeah. But in no event, I see, I see. So, yeah.
And so it probably just got carried away.
Yeah.
That belongs in a retail...
No, the word should be retail.
The word should be marijuana retail.
Not RMD or OMMD.
Be marijuana retail, that makes sense. Okay. Oh, so I have a question on your 20%. So how many package store licenses are there?
Seven.
Seven. So it's gonna be one?
Two.
Two, 20%? Yeah, thank you. A little slow on time. So two is gonna be your cap?
The max. Except for the selectmen.
Well, the selectmen want, this was not clearly communicated. The selectmen want a hard cap of two. But it's our understanding that in order to do that, and in order to avoid trouble if the number of licenses is expanded, that we do have to go through the exercise of a town meeting vote on a separate article to cap it at two, and a separate ballot vote to cap it at two.
Well, you wouldn't now. But when you got your 11 package store license, you'd need the ballot question.
If we had...
If you had two.
If we had limited to two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or we'd have to come back to town meeting to amend it, the zoning bylaw, by a two-thirds majority. So we, we were recommending the floating number.
Yeah.
And they want, they wanted the hard cap.
Granted, we're, we're ways, ways over getting 11, but down the road, because it's so far down the road that would ever come to fruition, it could be suddenly, holy smokes, are we in a mess?
Well, that would be totally up in the circle, because they issued the liquor license.
Well, I know. And then...
But let me ask this, what, what's been the growth of package store licenses over the years? Probably been seven, or eight years, six or seven?
Well, they just, I think, very...
Directly proportional to the number of students on campus.
But the, they just got, they were, they were going for an exemption a couple of years ago at town meeting to apply for some kind of a special permit for a lic, liquor license, and I don't know if it was serve licenses or package store licenses.
Yeah.
Where you're allowed by population to have this many, but you could go for expansion of so many more in state approval. And I'm not sure which one it was, a court permit, or package, or what. I mean, I, but I know that the town meeting approved it.
Yeah.
So I think we, we still have unissued licenses, so I'm not sure when you give that...
Yeah, I know, under the new, that particular program, the company wouldn't own the license like they do now. A liquor license right now is very valuable. Under that program, you would, you would use it.
Yeah.
But if you turned it over, or you moved or decided, I don't want to do it anymore, to revert back to the town, and you don't own this, like you're renting it.
Right. That was under, that would have been under the special act. The terms, the spec, it's funny, the legislature's gone back and forth on that, but in any event, a lot of the special acts for a while were written that it was specific to that operator, and it, yeah, got turned in when that operator was done.
All right, cool.
Okay. So, so the interesting question, if we have authorized but unissued, are we only counting, when we're doing the 20%, are we only counting the issued off-premises licenses or the authorized off-premises?
Yeah, the statute says issued.
Okay.
So that's, and that's, it's correctly phrased here.
Okay.
Referred to issue. So, um...
Issues of issued, okay.
I mean, I guess, honestly, it would be worth having a conversation with the selectmen about it, because, you know, understandably, it might be a cause for concern, so somebody should be keeping an eye.
I, I don't know if there's any unissued, unissued package store licenses.
But even as, as somebody comes in to apply, you know...
Right. Except for gas stations.
Well, Pride, Pride was able to get one without any trouble. They didn't, they got it directly from the town. So that was a, that was a new one.
Exactly.
So I don't know how many authorized but unissued there are.
Okay, yeah.
Well, they should be aware of this, shouldn't?
Yeah.
Shouldn't you, as town council, advise them and put them on notice about that?
Um, yeah. I, I mean, nobody, nobody from the selectmen has, you know, raised the issue, the concern about the...
Well, they probably don't know about it.
Yeah. Well, I'll have a conversation with Dave and just, um, let him, well, yeah, let him know where it stands at this point. Now, you know, if there's a transfer of a license, that has to go through the selectmen as well, as I'm sure they all know. So, I mean, they're able to keep an eye on it. And of course, everybody has to come in for a renewal at the end of each year.
But a transfer doesn't create a new...
No, you're right. But I'm saying, so they're able to keep track of all the licenses, all of the traffic, if you will, in the licenses.
They renew them every year.
Yeah. And the applications will be coming in in November for a December renewal. And, yeah, you don't want to keep an eye. I mean, you still have a cushion, even at 10, the number's still gonna be two, but as soon as you get to 11, it's gonna round up. So we have a lengthy comment here. If you, so if you look at comment number NJC, well, actually, there are two, 19 and 20. I was gonna comment on 20. But 19, it says no outside storage permitted. So comment number 19 goes with that short section 30.4.2.2, no outside storage permitted. So our comment is that the regulations allow marijuana establishments to operate in, quote, "enclosed areas," which are defined as indoor or outdoor areas, equipped with lots of security devices and so forth. So outside storage could be defined as following, you know, under that. In other words, the Cannabis Control Commission allows the use of outdoor areas as long as it's properly secured. So maybe you want to say no outdoor stor, storage is permitted unless it's properly enclosed and secured as required under the CCC regulations.
So the first draft, we did write it to accommodate both outside, well, outside and inside storage and growth, for that matter. And in reaction to some comments that were made, we did sort of a rewrite on, Jim did a rewrite on the fly to say that everything had to be indoors. And, well, so that, that is one of the flashpoints as to how much this is going to be completely internal. And in fact, the original draft bylaw that you had prepared, that PVPC prepared, said everything was going to be inside. And I think part of that was informed by the number of mill buildings that are empty and available, East Hampton, Holyoke, what have you. But we're an agricultural community, and we're interested with thinking that maybe someone would want to grow outdoors, especially some of the craft growers. But then that triggered a long discussion about smells, and whether the odors would be escaping the premises. And that's about where we...
The lighting.
And security.
Yeah.
Well, so the CCC regs...
Okay, this is...
Address it. I mean, they allow, they require, they require lighting, they require security. The smell issue, you know, you can't contain the smell in an outdoor facility. And so maybe this gentleman's graphic helps a little bit. In other words, if somebody's gonna grow, and there's the 300-foot setback requirements, there's gonna be a lot of land buffering. I, I mean, we don't have the answer to that. You've got good language in here about controlling odors.
But Halle, he does have land that's like the Aquavito, the honey pot.
Where nobody lives.
Right. And even down by, I don't know, by Mitch's Marina, but if that land is under APR, you can't grow it on APR land, right?
Some is, some isn't.
Well, APR, Agricultural Preservation Restriction, it's preserved for agriculture, and this is agriculture.
No, no, no.
No. I spoke to DAR's general counsel.
Okay.
And they were saying, because they use federal money, they don't allocate the federal money. It all goes into a pot. So every APR theoretically has a piece, every current APR has a piece of federal money in it. And on that basis, they say they do not approve it.
Don't you think we ought to make an overlay map of just actually where this could sit in this town?
No, I... No. We can look at that down the road. That's an idea, but the problem is, no matter where you do that, I can think of a number of areas that we could do that, that have lots of open fields. And I will use Lisa in the back, that she was, she was one that suggested it. Well, an ideal place would be, in my opinion, on the east side of Shattuck Road, because there's acres and acres of open fields and woodland. On the west side of Shattuck Road, there's heavy residential. So if you put the setback far enough back, it would still be a lay. So no matter what we do, there will be people that will not like it. And an overlay map, it all is going to do is single out this farmer or this landowner from this landowner. My opinion is, we put in the bylaw wording such that this is what it must meet. I don't know what those numbers and words are, so that if you meet it, you can grow it in these areas without singling out this landowner or this land... I mean, it's a great idea to put an overlay map in, but when you get to the details, you're, you're essentially favoring some landowners over others.
But that would not include in the industrial building where they got scrubbers and everything.
Wait a minute. I didn't say they wouldn't.
So this, this is the crux, right, right here.
Yeah.
And I thought this through a little bit. For example, the state allows basically two acres. And we originally thought that two acres, like a two-acre cornfield, was not a big deal. However, they want to grow it inside into greenhouses. There's a couple of greenhouses next to my farm. That red light glows. Jim can see it eight miles away to his house. Put two acres of that, 100,000 square feet of greenhouses, you're gonna light up the whole valley. So I am on the road to compromise. Like, we compromise on solar panels, not to have an unlimited amount of 50 acres of solar panel, which overwhelms the, wherever it is. So my compromise would be, let's start small, see how it does affect. And the smallness would be to the size of a tobacco barn, which is probably 4,000 square feet. And that would give people a visual impact of what it's gonna be like, and then if there's not a lot of heartburn over it to the neighbors, then we can expand it. So this is kind of my philosophy from 30,000 square feet. Because we also have to realize, this is a political discussion. Last time we were discussing this, there are 50, 60 people here. They could scuttle the whole bylaw.
Sure.
So that's what we have to look at as well. And once again, I've said this many, many times, zoning is that right of the individual owning the land versus the neighborhood.
Can you be more restrictive?
And that's that delicate balance we always talk about.
Can you be more restrictive than the state allows?
No, no. It, it allows up to.
What, Mr.?
Well, the state doesn't have a limit. They, well, they do have a limit. They, well, no, they don't, sorry. They have a limit, but it's not a limit on total size. Any single licensee can only grow 100,000 square feet of plant area. They use the word canopy. So if you had this table covered with plants or shelves this size, you could have 100,000 square feet total of these tables. But that's one licensee. So if each one of us here gets a license in the same building, and there's one guy who's proposing it, he's proposing one and a half million square feet grow facility, it's sort of a build-to-suit sort of thing.
Oh, great.
So that would be, you know, 15 different tenants. And there was one that was approved years ago, and it's never really gotten off the ground, the same idea, down the southeastern part of the state.
That's the fear I have. It's not gonna be Mr. Farmer, it's gonna be, a corporation's gonna come in and take over.
So the first one, the company's called American, and the can is C-A-N-N, get it, like cannabis?
Yeah, yeah.
And they're a Colorado company. They bought a property that the brewer, I think it was Sam Adams, put together to move, you know, enormous facility there, and they changed their mind, decided to stay where they are. So there was this huge land available off of 495, and this kind of thing that, it's like an industrial park, right? I mean, there are industrial parks, you drive down a highway, you have no idea, there's a quarter million square foot plant behind the trees, I mean, that sort of thing. But it, so it depends on the location. Obviously, you're not gonna want that outgrown, you know, among the corn here. So the only thing I'll say is that we, and we have, it's, it's our next comment here, we talked about 2,500 square feet for retail, which is a different issue, but that explanation there, that note in JC 20, talks about, and Johnny, this goes back to your comment, there's no, your question, there's no square footage limit, up or low, in other words, you know, a ceiling or at the high end. But you can't have a bylaw that would have the effect of making it unreasonably impracticable for somebody to have the business. Essentially, what they mean is that the site is too small for anybody to make money off of it. So...
Well, the old...
But this is just for the retail.
We can regulate, but we cannot prohibit.
That's for the retail, but when Joe's talking about 4,000 square feet of grow facility, is that too small?
Well, Oregon and Northern California have those types of facilities, even smaller than the 4,000.
They're small craft growers.
That's correct.
They're the premium people.
Yeah. And that's what you're gonna get.
Here, so, yeah, so I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like you're talking about two different things. So one is the, the outdoor grow, keeping that small, and if somebody, if there's a warehouse, I mean, let's say...
There's not...
Somewhere the malls gets dead again, and somebody decides to grow inside what's now one of the large 100,000 square foot areas.
They're gonna, Stephen has the comment, he says they're not gonna grow it outside. I mean, he's the residential expert now about growing it, and, and they're not gonna grow it outside, that's what's his comment.
Well, okay, I'll be interested to hear.
The reason they would grow it outside is, if you think about all the rain we've recently had through August, through the fall, there's been a tremendous amount of bud rot, which is a disease that strawberries get, and it's, it affects cannabis, and you can't sell a product. So coming back to the greenhouses, part of the greenhouse philosophy is to use natural sunlight. You could have blackout greenhouses, which would shield the light, and you would only have the light on for long periods of time during vegetative stages. So light should not be an issue if you do it so that you say, okay, lights will be off by eight or nine o'clock at night, or come on during the early hours of the morning when nobody's up.
There is no such thing in Halle, if people aren't up in the early hours of the morning. Guaranteed.
Or they could blackout.
Yeah. There are structures you can get to blackout everything within your greenhouse.
That was a question, that was a comment that we put in here that was taken out, and, um, under 30 physical requirements, 30-point lighting. You, under yours, you've got...
427 illumination requirements.
All lighting shall comply with zoning bylaws, shall be shielded without the land that is their property. Plan board will require any artificial lighting system to employ only LED components equipped with deflectors in order to mitigate potential light pollution. What does that mean?
Well, the, so, you know, we didn't, in striking it out, we weren't trying to get rid of the concept, we were just phrasing it differently. So all lighting shall comply with the zoning bylaw, shall be shielded, so as not to shed light onto adjacent properties.
30.4.2.7.
So...
We had, we had put in there, "Security lighting shall comply with eight-point, section 8.8.9 of the bylaw."
Well, this is, now here we're not talking about security lighting.
I know. That, that was my original comment that was removed.
Security lighting is... Security lighting is different than-
The, right, we're talking about two different things, but-
We were talking two different things.
I, so I don't think, we didn't eliminate anything, we just rephrased things, so.
I disagree.
We got rid of that entirely?
I disagree. My comment, "Security lighting shall comply," that's fine, section four, thirty point four point two point six, you've left it, and nine thirty-five CMR, that's fine. Four, thirty point four point two point seven, you said, "Lighting shall comply with the zoning bylaw and be shielded so as not to shed light onto adjacent properties." What does that mean?
Well, it means you can't, that the neighbors can't see it.
That's not what it says.
Well, you can't-
It's open to interpretation.
So it's not to shed light onto, so, so not only can they not see it, well, they can't see it, I mean-
Well, don't they talk about the sky?
I mean, that's when you're talking about the blackout.
Well, yeah, but, and mine was simply, but my opinion, one we had was more clearer. "Illumination utilized for growing purposes shall be shielded so as not to be visible to neighboring properties and to the sky above." That was removed.
Yeah. The, I, I think so yours, yours is absolute, I guess.
Yes.
And I guess the concern with that, and I didn't make that change, the concern with that is that it may be impossible to meet.
Not if you build it inside of a blackware, a black, a building.
Yeah.
Basically, what we're saying is you can't use a plastic clear hoop house.
Yeah. So what, the way we wrote it is, "So as not to shed light onto adjacent properties," I mean, yeah, you can stick with your language.
But, but the neighboring property can see it. Like I said.
Yeah.
To the sky, so that neighbors can't see it, but if, but if it's open to the sky above, like I said, I live eight miles from Joe's Greenhouses, well, not Joe's Greenhouse, what his neighbor, there's a mountain in between us, and I can see that at some time when it lights up the sky. That's not an exaggeration, that's a fact.
What color is that one?
Pardon?
What color? Red?
It, it-
Yeah, so let me comment a little bit. The red ones are a ribbon, like a rope, and they shine all around them, so that they are radiating to the top. Like, these lights here are radiating down. The bird lights that you would use in a greenhouse for cannabis wouldn't be those LED red lights that you see in the sky, because we see them as well. These point downward, and the idea is that the light does go down, does not go up. And I have some pictures showing greenhouses, yeah, you can see the illuminated greenhouse, but it's in the snow, and the footprint out from the greenhouse is just a few feet. It's not raining out.
But nothing that way?
Yeah, well, there's very little goes up. Because you're shooting, I have a brochure with the shielding that shows the type of lights that cannabis growers use, and they are shielded around, the bulb is underneath, and the light comes down, it's reflected down, not up.
But it still reflects down and goes up, and it still reflects out.
Radiation going off a leaf is only about ten percent.
Yeah, but it's, it's basically, it, lighting is, when you shine light down, it's going to bounce up to a certain extent, I agree, and it's going to radiate out. I mean, to say that you could direct light to a certain point and not see in other places is-
Yeah, but you're only talking about a greenhouse, not a building.
But, what I'm saying is, these buildings, if they're built, if the greenhouses, the hoop houses, whatever you wanna call them, are near a couple hundred feet from a residence, and the lights are on at any time during the night, you're gonna go outside, you're gonna see this illuminated thing in front of you.
At this point, I think we're having a technical conversation. I'm not competent to-
Okay, we're getting to too much meat, no, no.
Let me say one thing about outdoor grows before I forget. Going into this, two years ago, I thought that outdoor growing is not gonna happen in Massachusetts, but because they're not gonna be able to compete with the people who are gonna go twenty-four, seven, and, you know, go in the old warehouses and everyone's gonna be. What I've learned at different meetings, different planning boards, is the local farmers showing up and saying, you know, and, and this season obviously would have been a challenging one, but saying, "Look, you know, I grow corn, tomatoes, lettuce, whatever, if I can have a half acre of marijuana, take my chances with it like I do many other crops."
Well, you can't call him a farmer if he's growing marijuana.
He's still a farmer.
This guy's a real farmer.
Isn't that true, Jimmy? You gotta correct the council, will you?
This is somebody who's growing tomatoes, that makes him a farmer. But the point being, that this farmer might be looking for the half acre of a cash crop, and take his chances on the climatic conditions, get the fans out, maybe, get, you know, typically wet season. Just that there will be, so, to my great surprise, we were upset half the Cape Towns, I don't do any work down there. But the little town of Truro, right next to Province Town, it's got these small growers who are just mad to go and do this craft growing, and they've had this real tussle back and forth, and we've come up with this lengthy bylaw that's gonna allow for these small craft growers to grow marijuana along with whatever else they've been growing. You know, just for the, the boost to the bottom line, if they can get a crop.
If you have to weigh in on it, I, I look at it, we have several options. Number one option is to take this growing paragraph out for the time being and pass a, a bylaw that, and then address this separately. So that's one option. Option number two would be kind of my compromise, the four thousand square feet, whether indoors or outdoors, and have our regulations to cover it. And option number three was are the no-holes barred, you know, it's up to a hundred thousand square feet of greenhouses and a hundred thousand square feet of open land. So that's, obviously, I think I'm using for the compromise situation to see how it goes. Because everybody's jumping into this, you have no idea what's gonna happen.
Oh, I have a great idea. Oh, no, what's gonna happen, yeah, but I have so many-
Okay, well, I'm interested in your opinion, because-
No, but I have, you're right, I'm sorry, I jumped in too soon. I have no idea what it's gonna look like, but I, I do have a a big idea of how many communities are opting in. You know, the press is writing up all the communities that are saying no and have moratorium and all that. But there are dozens of communities, I'd say a third of the Berkshires already have said yes to the past bylaws they've allowed.
This is like every town having a brewery, I mean, can it use it all is the question.
Well, you know, I'm wondering about these craft breweries, how long they're all gonna last.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but it's not every town, but, but yeah, we don't, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, we have no idea how it's gonna happen. You know, in Canada, which went legal, in Toronto, there were just, two, I just read this over the weekend, there were two or three shops that were open, and after seven days, they had no product. They had to close, because they, they got wiped out.
So, are we gonna make that decision tonight, Jim? We're gonna think about it?
Hey, Joe, if this gets away on us, how do we regroup from that?
I, I agree with you. I, that's why I don't wanna say, let it all go, a hundred thousand square feet of greenhouses or a hundred thousand square feet of-
Now, can we, can we, we've approved marijuana. Can we say no growing allowed in Hadley, but only selling?
So, you can, but you need a ballot question.
Oh, we did, we do need a ballot.
So, there are the four basic types of marijuana establishments. If you wanna ban any one of them, you need a ballot question for that.
Okay, so we can't, we can't ban it?
Well, you can, but you need a ballot question.
I thought it would pass.
Right.
Okay.
So, so to Joe's suggestion, and I don't necessarily, I'm not saying necessarily the board goes along with it, my concern with a four thousand foot limit on growing is that the AG might say it's tantamount to a prohibition, because, I mean, four thousand feet outdoor growing, I could see, but four thousand feet indoor growing, I think they'd say it's tantamount to a prohibition, and you need a ballot.
The reason I said four thousand square feet, tobacco barn, eight-bent tobacco barn is roughly it's a little less than four thousand square feet, so people could visualize how big that would be. I, I, not a hard and fast one.
Would it be advisable for us to prohibit growing to see how other towns cope with this and the repercussions of it?
Yes, we need a ballot question to do it.
Well, so what? So if we go to get a ballot question, and to go to the Springtown meeting, and if the people vote no, they don't want it, then no, they don't want it. But if they do yes, then it's gonna get us more times and see what actually happens out there.
No, I don't think so, because we only have our moratorium through Springtown meeting, so we'll, June, well.
But if the town meeting votes not to grow it?
We have to have a bylaw ready to go, because if the town, it's fine, if the town meeting votes not to grow it and backs it up with the ballot, that's fine, but if we don't have a bylaw ready to go at the same time, and they go the other way, we're really just swinging in the wind down there.
Joe, Joe made a good point at the town meeting, the fact that if we continue to extend the, the moratorium, extended, extended, in effect, we're prohibiting or overruling the vote, correct?
Yeah, well, this is, this is your last extension, assuming you get it, Bill, I saw what you did by way of history, which I think will help, but you know, nobody's gonna get an extension after this June, that's for sure.
Okay.
You know, something drastic. You could put it just where the medical marijuana is, I mean, that would be, you'd be grow it in the industrial business zone if it's essentially classified as a business, and that would be a place to start until we work out a little bit more of exactly-
That's an idea, too.
Where it might be a good place, or how far away from a house it should be, because, I mean, someone's house, even, I mean, I wasn't here for the meeting where the three hundred feet was discussed, but that might be okay in some houses, but if you have no trees and you're straight on three hundred feet, you're gonna see a lot, smell a lot. You know, if the back of your property backs up to one sixteen, or the river on the other side, who cares about the three hundred foot rear step back, because they're just nature back there, but, you know, I, I I would like to see maybe some modifications to that distance from a house where these, if we're gonna put it in agres, because, you know, it's, even though it's agricultural, it's still a drug, and you can't get it unless you're twenty-one. So it's not a tomato or a piece of corn that you're gonna give to your five-year-old. I think we need to put a little more care into exactly where we're putting a facility like this. And to put it in agricultural residential zone anywhere, three hundred feet next to anybody's house, is still pretty close. And so, I know you guys are really fighting with this, and it's really a tough issue, and I appreciate all of your work on it. I know that there were probably fifty people here at the last public hearing, and the Red Sox were on. You probably would have had more if it wasn't a, you know, World Series playoff game. And there was a lot of people at town meeting from the same neighborhood, and, and everybody was very concerned, and I know you need two-thirds of a vote to make this fly, and I can tell you, if it doesn't change and it stays in agres and it's potentially near a lot of these houses, there will be a lot of people coming out to really dance it, and I want it to pass. In, in a way that works right now, and then-
Well, Lisa, just because you want it, that doesn't mean the rest of the community wants it, the same thing with me.
No, but-
Right?
Well, if you put it in the business zone, potentially, I mean, we already have medical marijuana.
I look at this, no matter where we're gonna put it in this town, somebody is gonna complain.
Well, it's always to complain, but it's better that they complain now, so we can regulate. The, the basic thing is, Joe, how far can we regulate as, when it becomes prohibition? Remember, I had this beaten into me by Betty Carata, Ken versus Doug, I'll read it again, read it again, and how far a setback, how small the building, how small the plot, and that's what we're gonna have to wrestle with, and let's see.
Well, I think Lisa makes a good point. I mean, you do have, you know, the more business and industrial zones where where you can allow the indoor grow. I mean, we're talking about two different things here. One is the, let's call it the industrial grow facilities.
Yeah.
And, I mean, because you've got buildings there now that have over a thousand square foot, once they're enclosed, and the the CCC regs are pretty, pretty strict in terms of the indoor facilities containing odors and all that, and I'm told, I don't know if a few know, but I'm told the technology for controlling odors for the indoor grow facilities is-
Yeah, it's using carbon inhibitors. That was the last page on the package that you had. And you can essentially do that in greenhouses, too. It would be every twenty-eight minutes, every thirty minutes, to exchange all the air through a filter through an enclosed greenhouse. And it's only odors at certain times of the year during the flowering.
If town meeting rejects the zoning bylaw proposed by this board, can the AG come in and say, "This is what you're gonna do"?
No, it's not the AG. If town meeting rejects the bylaw, and you don't regulate marijuana at all, anywhere where you allow retail, somebody can open a pot shop, anywhere where agriculture is allowed under your bylaw, they can grow it. And so forth, any, any place where industrial manufacturing-
They'll do it by right then.
They'll do it by right.
So rejecting a bylaw we bring forward is a lot of risk.
Right, and I think a lot of the residents, they were all here, they were all at town meeting to make sure the more growing went through. I'm sure they'll be at Springtown meeting. I mean, we kinda figured out, we kinda talked about our neighborhood and about how many houses, and there's probably like sixty-five billion dollars of the real estate up there. Like, everybody's concerned about the property values, their families, people moved up there because they do not want, you know, a industrial facility in their neighborhood.
Do you think anybody's smoking up marijuana up there?
Can we require, like, the medical marijuana, we require it to be done in a fully enclosed building and not visible from the exterior of the business? Can we require that for regular adult use?
Yeah, I mean, that, that allows agriculture. In other words, what you're asking is, can you allow it only indoors and not outdoors?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, so I'm getting to the point where we allow something,
Yeah.
and it's controlled to a relatively smaller area, but still permitted in town.
Yeah.
And to Joe's point, for others, down the road, how is it working out in other towns? Is there really an odor? Does it really smell? Does it really, does it do this, does it do that? And then down the road, we open it up to other things.
When you stack it up.
Stock it, exactly. And right here, I'm saying, this is, this is direct wording from, from medical marijuana. "All aspects of the facility used to acqui-, used relative to acquisition, cultivation, possession, processing, sale, distribution, dispensing administrative marijuana product, containing marijuana, related supplies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, shall be in a fixed location within a fully enclosed building and shall not be visible from the exterior of the business."
The same sort of language goes for outside in the CCC regulation, that you cannot be walking by and visibly see it without a telescope.
You can see the building, but you're not seeing what's in it.
Even in greenhouses, you're not allowed to be under the certain plants growing just by casually walking along the street, unless you use-
Fully enclosed building would mean a fully enclosed building, not, not, not a hoop house, not a greenhouse, nothing like that.
You can see the building.
You can see the real house, you can't see what's inside of it, and you can't see light on the outside of it, yes.
The vote you took in that large meeting said that it has to have three hundred feet setback, even around that building on all sides.
Yeah, I, again, you heard me, I disagree with that.
Right.
Okay. I think a three hundred foot setback for a residence is reasonable.
Yes.
For three hundred feet for all-
For outside growing.
For any, e- even for a regular building, but three hundred feet from all boundary lines is not reasonable. Because you then, the three hundred foot setback from all boundary lines forces it into agresidential.
Yes.
Because there's very, I can only think of about three or four business property that you could grow it in, in town. All the rest would force it into agresidential.
But if you're in a facility, then it could be taken care of with, with scrubbers or what, to clean the smell or anything.
It can in the greenhouse, too.
What?
It can in the greenhouse as well.
I mean, I do have a business on a design, and if a place came in next to me, I'd deal with it. If a complete place came in next to my house, I'd freak out. You know, I mean, they're two separate entities, you know, it's business, you expect lights or some smell or some noise or something, and in a residential neighborhood, you don't expect that. You don't expect lights all the time.
The way it's worded in here, "Medical growing facility shall be located on a lot, no," I'm sorry, reword it, "No grow facility," they use buzzwords, they use analogies in here. "No facility shall be located on a lot which applies in residential use, including commercial residential you, that uses such as hotels, motels, lodging houses, or residential zoning district."
You're reading out of the, the medical-
Medical marijuana.
Well, I suggest we move on.
Right.
We have-
We've left some ideas here.
Yeah, something that you want.
Okay.
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 So then we're on the location, section 30.4.3. All right, so then you get into the 300 feet, so you've discussed that sufficiently, all we've done there. Oh, well, so we just make the comment, the NJC 21, that, so the statute, of course, has buffer zones from places where education, you know, pre-existing schools K through 12, and it doesn't talk about any other kind of buffer zone, so we don't know, you know, how the attorney general will react to any other kind of buffer zone.
Would a church be involved in that or not?
No, the statute only talks about.
Education.
Education, yeah. Other towns have put in others and we haven't seen if the attorney general.
I think it's not been approved.
Been approved?
No, that's my understanding.
I think you're probably right because it's been a while. Yeah, the Springtown meetings would have some.
How about a mosque? We have a mosque coming into town, they're gonna have children's education or.
We had, Bill had that conversation because it was in.
You're beyond the 300-foot.
The adult use one doesn't have that restriction to where children congregate. So it clearly does not include the ice cream window at Friendly's or church schools or anything like that. It's just classic K through 12 educational.
Even daycares don't count.
Right, it starts at K, yeah.
Let me just ask a question here. Is it, is it my sense that, based on what you just talked about, is that if you want to limit the growth of marijuana solely for medical purposes and that growth should be only within the inside of a compartment or?
No, 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 I was reading through the existing medical marijuana bylaw, how they regulate where grow facilities can be.
Right, just as an example.
As an example, where we may wanna tune that wording for this, for the time being, for the adult grow uses.
We've already adopted a medical marijuana bylaw.
Right.
So this is purely on the adult use, the commercial use.
No, start rather than doing it everywhere in town, that we just use similar wording for the adult use until we find out the lay of the land for adult growing, then down the road, we could possibly open it up to other areas.
You meant such as recreational use?
Well, wouldn't recreational, recreation's already approved.
So we're using adult use, recreational use, and commercial use interchangeably. As opposed to medical, because medical was the first one that was adopted. And then now the adult use has been adopted, but adult recreational and commercial are the same thing.
We use it, we don't make it confused, the terms to us are the same thing. It is either medical or other.
Right. All right, so, I mean, there's still on the table the possibility of allowing farmers or however you want to describe them to grow outside.
That was the original idea. But we're finding, we're having lots of thoughts on that at the time being because of all kinds of issues, the odors and smells and lighting.
The situation that we face, though, is that roughly three-quarters of the town is zoned agricultural residential, where farming is allowed and houses are allowed. And what Lisa was talking about was cutting back just to the business and industrial districts, which are functionally just below Route 9. And that has the benefit of putting a commercial use in a commercial district, the drawback is it disenfranchises, if you will, a lot of farmers who are the logical people to do the craft growing.
And also the land on Route 9 is probably the poorest agricultural land in town, it's clay.
Well, as an example, I'm a property on Honeypot and we're thinking about the possibility of growing marijuana there, you know, provided we comply with the rules and regulations. My sense is that that would not be possible, based on your thinking at the moment.
No.
If it's possible, it's a way down the road.
We don't know. You're listening to our concerns. And to Joe, we've gotta satisfy, we've gotta find the middle of the line where we only upset 50% of the people here, 50% of the people here, so that nobody's gonna be satisfied.
Sure.
Or very, let's put it this way, most people and most, it's not a win-win situation, it's a half-win on everybody's part.
By the way, you can only upset a third of the people because you needed to.
But they, that's a good shot. That potential third has to be educated that if it doesn't go through, then all bets are off.
Three for all.
And it's not, this isn't a just say no option here.
This is the first time we've ever run into a situation where if we do nothing, we're in a deep doo-doo.
But if it doesn't go through, it can't go on agres because it's a business use.
No, it can go anywhere.
Well, no, all agricultural, all agriculture is a business use.
Yeah.
I always told it a business use and it had to go on a business law.
No, no. It is not considered, what is not considered as agricultural by right, but if you have no laws regulating it, it can be done anywhere, anyway.
Except there's still not an APR.
Except it can't be gone on APR land.
So that clause in the enabling legislation is just to take it out of the agricultural exemption of chapter 48. So it doesn't, it's not exempt and a farmer can do whatever they want with it, like putting up a 20,000-square-foot dairy farm with a lagoon. But it is allowed in the agricultural district.
Now, it's only not allowed on APR land until a federal government decides it is still a Class 1 drug and it's not allowed. But if they ever change that rule in the federal government, then it can be grown on APR land, would be my opinion.
That's a pretty sketchy opinion, but I haven't heard that before. But anyway, we're on it.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
Okay, I'll send you the email.
I would love, actually, I'd like to see it, yeah, you'd really like to see it because I don't know that anybody in the office had heard that.
Oh, yeah.
You what?
Certainly, we have heard that.
You have, okay.
Probably from me.
No.
Okay, moving on. Page what?
So, well, we were on, we were at, let's look at the, our comment, the NJC 21, so that's the one where we were just talking about the 20-foot setbacks. The next page or so is just, is really just a lot of formatting stuff, there's really nothing to look at till we get to, well, then, to the next page, we get to the 365-day issue, which we talked about, so now look at, if you look at NJC comment 23, well, no, look at 24, that's the one where we've got the inconsistency with C's to operate. But I think you talked about that earlier, where you're gonna fix the other one, the 60-day one, so then it might be, that won't be an issue. So again, the, all right, then the next comment is comment number 27, where you have a bond requirement. So this is just a policy issue for you to consider. So what our comment says is the Cannabis Control Commission regulations already require an escrow account to cover the disposal of plants. Towns can impose additional security. So you can have a look at that, but the question is, you know, you wanna get in the business of having your own bond requirement. Anytime you collect a bond, then the purpose of the bond is to allow you to go in and clean it up if they walk away. And we always caution, and it's in our comment here, either this one or the next one, we always caution that you don't have the right to go in. Ultimately, if somebody walks, you've got the bond money, you have to go to court to give an administrative order to let the town to go in and spend the money to clean up whatever needs to be cleaned up.
Good point.
So, I mean, it's up for you to consider, you can look, or we can send you the CCC regulations and see if you find.
Well, why look for that kind of trouble?
I think I can speak for the treasurer that one more bond would not be, she'd rather not have to deal with bonding.
Now, what is the option if we don't do that? It will rot.
No, the Cannabis Commission requires that they have, that, any buyer have an escrow account to cover the disposal of plants, not the whole building and facility. You're not gonna take down the building, you're just gonna, you're interested in getting out the plants.
You want the junk inside.
Yeah, and so.
How we dealt with it on the medical marijuana side was we had the applicant speak with the police chief. This police chief figured out, based on the amount of product that would be in the facility, how long would it take two officers on private detail rates to take hold of all product in there?
And dispose of it?
And dispose of it, or at least pull it out of the, pull it out of the site.
We're all thick.
Smoke it, eat it. Or smoke it.
So that was how we mechanically worked out it, and it turned out to be not hugely expensive for clearing out a medical marijuana dispensary where the operators had walked away. Probably, I think it was less than $5,000.
So that's, I have heard some other towns.
Excuse me, Joe, I have to leave, I'm gonna catch a flight tomorrow morning and sell it to Houston, so.
Okay.
Take good notes out.
Happy flying.
The states, escrow was capped at 5,000 and other towns were, some other towns are concerned that that's enough.
Oh, okay. Let me look at that, yeah.
That's just.
Yeah, CCC requires an escrow bond type thing to be set up.
Right, but I think there's a cap.
Question is, is it capped?
So with the single medical dispensary that we were dealing with, that was something where the police chief estimated it would take two officers, three hours, and their private detail rate was X number of dollars. And then the product would be brought to the station and eventually disposed of according to police department protocols for dealing with.
So what is that, escrow account?
I think that one is a bond, but they haven't posted it because they haven't opened for business. But that was the mechanism we used for figuring out how to do it. I can see where, in the agricultural context, it could be a, depending on how large the site is, it could be a much costlier proposition.
Well, we got rid of it before by simply using a corn cutter, grinding it up. There was a fiber-growing marijuana between this cornfield.
Oh, really?
And it was just ground up with a corn cutter and blown over the field. There is some residual growth left over from the seeds, however.
With marijuana, people won't have seeds because they don't want the seeds, that lowers the value of it.
Well, hemp does.
Hemp does, yes, that's why you kind of have hemp and marijuana growing together.
Uh huh, maybe have some hemp mixed in.
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
Someone, another town said.
Well, we can have a closer look at that.
I don't think that's a big, big problem, getting rid of the stocks and, no, so I don't think we should worry about a bond there.
So it looks like the rest of the comments are fairly.
Yes.
Fairly minor. I think we really have hit the high points.
There is one minor, just an edit. So on the same page where the NJC 27 comment is.
What page do you want?
Well, page numbers are different.
Eight or nine.
Nine on mine.
It's 30.4.5.6.
Yeah.
Yeah, read this one here.
But, so we're done with that, I'm looking at the very next one, 5.7.
Okay.
Mind me, I notice some words were missing, so let me just read it. The initial special permission, the sections will be filed for a period of one year and subsequent rules will be filed for two years. Okay, makes sense. If no complaints have been received after two successive renewals, then there will be, and it says no further renewals, I think what you want to say, no need for further renewals.
Okay.
So the next page, application requirements, section 30.5. Yeah, in the warrant article, you see we deleted a lot of language in 30.5, the warrant article is much shorter, it just says, complete applications for special permits, site plan approvals, marijuana establishments will be processed in the order that they are filed with the town, period. In addition to the standard application requirements for special permits and site plan approvals, such applications for marijuana establishments shall include the following, and you can get into it. So the, all of that language that we've struck here, we took out. The language there is, you know, choosing among people, among applicants, I guess. Some of it's already captured also. So you might want to revisit that language.
We've already revisited language for what again, Bill?
Well, so that first long paragraph in 30.5.
Right, right.
We recommended taking up most of the text and then what you went to town meeting with actually takes out all of that text.
Yes.
So, I don't know if you're happy with it being gone.
Well, if it's kind of given, then that's fine.
Yeah, so basically what happened was, when we did get all of your comments, Jim took half, had half a day to try to work them into the warrant article, but that still didn't answer some of the questions we had.
Sure.
And again, I think just we really sort of focused on the two big issues, which really comes to where it's going to be allowed and how, how close to other properties will it be allowed?
Well, and what you've left a third ingredient that, that's really key, and that is, what kinds of controls can you impose on these facilities so that proximity won't have to be the concern that, you know, we all think it might be? And the problem is, we don't really know, and this gentleman has a lot of information suggesting that the technology is there to allow for greater proximity, certainly as to enclosed facilities. And, you know, open fields, you know, will always have some odor issues.
I think of what, no.
But modern greenhouses with the technology that was described, you know, could be, I mean, obviously, so some bylaws, for example, that allow greenhouse growing have language the effect, it has to look like a, you know, typical New England agricultural structure. So you're not gonna get a metal shed in the middle of a cornfield. And the other language controls the technology that's gonna deal with odor in particular and lighting and that sort of thing, so.
I think if we start off with allowing it in the business and industrial zones.
In a building.
In a building. And forget the 300-foot for residents, because if it looks like a building and it's next to a, you know, if there's a house nearby and it's not really impeding them right now.
Yeah.
For the time being, that's a good start. After a couple of years, we see, we said before, the lay of the land with other areas and open grow and the rest of stuff, are all the fears valid? Are they? If they are, great, if they're not?
And you're gonna hear about incidents in other communities.
Absolutely, oh, you're gonna, there's gonna be lots.
It's gonna be a lot of fielding.
You know, and then we can, okay, now, yeah, the farmers unfortunately that have, that wanted to open grow or put it in, you know, whatever, next to certain areas, they're not gonna be able to. But better to. But better to start small and expand than make have a disaster on their hands.
And if you do that, you'll, you won't be prohibiting agriculture, so. In the same, you have manufacturing in the same area, so you'll be allowing all of the uses.
Right.
Somewhere in town on a reasonable basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that. So if, a couple of questions I have. I know Bill clarified the APR provision, the fact that it's federal money is involved in funding APR, so it's not allowed on APR land. But I was under the opinion that the Cannabis Commission said that marijuana is not to be considered agricultural.
No, so that's what Bill was talking to earlier, so it was actually.
Only APR section, or?
APR is one issue, but entirely separate from that was the First Amendment. To, so the marijuana law, you know, it was question four on the ballot in two thousand sixteen, got voted in November, actually, two years ago. Then like six weeks later, the legislature made two amendments. One was they pushed back all of the deadlines, six months. And the other is they added like five or six lines that says, where it says in the zoning act in chapter forty, section three, that agriculture must be permitted on all land of five or more acres zone for agricultural uses. So any town that has AR or whatever means you have to allow agriculture. So that's agriculture by right, you know, all over most parts, I mean, all over the entire state where there are, where there's land that fits that description. They added a sentence essentially saying, when we say agriculture, we don't include marijuana. So all it did was it excluded marijuana from getting the benefit of the agricultural exemption statewide. But it had no effect on local zoning bylaws, so when, in the Hadley zoning bylaw, when you say, and every other zoning bylaw, you can say agriculture is allowed anywhere on two acres or five acres, then Hadley's allowing it. It's not the state zoning act, it's Hadley. So your zoning bylaw was not affected by that change.
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't have the, smiling, the Dover and men with qualification for agriculture.
Exactly, but if you allow it under the, so that's exactly right, but, but where you allow it generously around town, it's still allowed.
Good point, thank you for clarifying.
So it didn't, though, under the state statute.
Yeah.
Marijuana is not agricultural.
Correct.
But within Hadley, if you allow agricultural.
Yeah.
You need to allow marijuana?
That's right, that's right. Now, the lands that are, so we're, you know, learning tonight that the lands that are protected, that were acquired with, you know, state APR funds, then those evidently, this theory says that, you know, federal, because of the use of federal funds, you can't use APR lands. But that's separate, that's not all farm, I mean, any farmland that anybody in the room owns is not APR farmland.
Okay.
So using.
I wanna go over this one again because it's still not clear.
So using the agricultural exemption under forty A, if we said that agriculture was not allowed in the business district because of, it creates dust, and we don't want dust in the business district. Someone using the forty A agricultural exemption on a five acre par, five acre parcel?
Yeah, well, and then there's a two acre clause as well.
But using that exemption, they can say, well, I'm going to farm in the business district anyway.
Okay.
Because I have the agricultural exemption. Or I am going to put a pig farm in the residential district because I have the agricultural exemption.
Business district, I'm looking, see if I can pull the statute up, wouldn't work, the land, it has to be land that's zoned agriculture. So something that's zoned at AR is zoned for agriculture.
In fact, I think everything except our residential district allows agriculture.
Right, now, getting back to marijuana. So if we do nothing, they could grow marijuana in any agricultural district.
Correct.
But if we adopt this bylaw and we say for the time being, you could only grow marijuana in the business or industrial districts and not agricultural, we're okay.
I'm sorry, say that again.
If we adopt this bylaw with wording that says adult use marijuana can only be grown in business or industrial zones.
Yeah.
And no place else.
Right.
That is okay.
That's right.
Cause you're allowing it.
Yeah, and you're overriding the, otherwise the agricultural use elsewhere. Growing marijuana is prohibited in all districts except for here.
Okay, okay.
So I've got forty eight, three years.
You're not, we're not, not allowing it.
But we need to, we need to put something in to allow it somewhere.
Right.
Well, the other question, Jim, we're gonna have to clarify is only inside a building, or do we wanna let?
Not outside grown.
Not outside grown?
Not outside grown.
Yeah, we, we, we need to discuss that, at least we've got the ground rules from Joel. That, I mean, we're not far from, we got, most of the stuff in here is okay with the exception of the growing area, that's what we gotta work on.
Yeah.
And, and we, so the question is inside or outside row?
Again, how do you limit the people that grow it in their backyard?
I, I.
The may or you or two be changed.
I will.
Well, those ten plants are going in anyway, that's correct.
That's right.
We have nothing to say about that.
Anybody that wants to grow the ten or twelve plants or whatever it is, they can do that, period. I think that's, that's not our concern, our concern is the hundred thousand square feet, or whatever, so.
Is there anything like, something like a craft deal or something in a small quantity? But more than ten plants to be outside? Cause ten plants could be, ten plants could be grown outside, right?
Two thousand square feet, four thousand square feet?
No, not that big.
If we say strictly business or industrial, we're pretty much prohibiting, we're not just regulating because there's, if you really knew the zoning in Hadley, you can't grow.
No.
Anything out of business.
It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to grow it in every spot in the town.
Yeah, but nobody is, nobody is going to, if we're calling for indoor growth, no one is going to be plowing up industrial land to grow marijuana. It's gonna be in a, it's gonna be in a pot.
In a warehouse.
In a warehouse.
In a warehouse, yeah.
That, Hadley is an agricultural town, it seems counterintuitive to restrict it from agricultural land.
That's right, however, the last thing we wanna do that we've said before is allow it, allow it like we said before, and it turns into be a disaster.
And it gets out of hand.
And it gets out of hand, because then to pull it back, we have more in the hard way, it is almost impossible. If we start very restrictive and we want to expand it, experience has said that is much easier.
We're just being.
And I will take all the heat for all the farmers in the land to do that because there's so many, it's common sense, that's what we're gonna do.
All but being cautious.
That's right, yes.
But there are ways to be cautious if you have good setbacks from, how, three hundred feet from a road, three hundred feet from a residence. Less than distance from.
So, so this is, this, this is actually, it's been a very interesting conversation because, you know, we have a very energized group of people who would be as, I'm sure they'd be prepared to vote as a block against the bylaw, but maybe if the bylaw imposed, said, okay, well, allow it in the agricultural residential district, but with these limits, and that did not sit well with an energized block, and with an open town meeting, when a block comes, they kind of run the meeting. Yet, we're also hearing that if that block voted against the bylaw that restricted growth in agricultural residential districts, and the bylaw did not pass, then all restrictions are off.
Right, it could be anywhere.
And it could be anywhere, so that, that is going to be, that's the real conundrum here about how, you know, what, how we're gonna juggle that, because.
Every other bylaw we've ever had to deal with, if it was voted down, it's penalty, it just won't happen. This one is the a hundred percent opposite of that, if you vote it down, it's open season. And so to Bill's point, and everything we've been talking about, is we gotta be very careful how we do this because this one could be a very lose-lose situation if it's not done right, so, okay.
It's either careful or careless.
That's right, that's a good point.
At one point, if you put on a ballot question and didn't allow it, like say it got voted down at town meeting, and then could you put it on the next ballot, and what if you, then the town decides they don't want it, what happens then? If they approve it at town meeting, and then the town brings it to the next election?
So, let's, so the town meeting's in early May. The planning board brings forward a bylaw along the lines that we're discussing that allows some of all of the uses. If that doesn't get a two-thirds vote, then the moratorium expires end of June, I think, two thousand nineteen. Then as of July one, it's open season, people can come anywhere, so. Then if somebody wants to put together a prohibition bylaw, they'd have to get a bylaw passed through a special town meeting and also have to get a special election or wait a whole year to get a ballot question passed.
But I think, Joe, on this thing.
You need vote, you need a zoning bylaw that prohibits it by two-thirds vote and then a ballot question by majority vote.
I think this, though, if it was explained like, basically if this doesn't pass, it's a free for all, and people will strongly reject that, this can happen anywhere, in my neighborhood, behind my house, anywhere. I don't think you'll ever see that kind of stuff allowed to happen.
What was the note?
Let me just make one suggestion, so we're here at the beginning of November, town meeting is whatever, five, six months off. So you may wanna have another of those large meetings, and, I mean.
A forum on it.
A forum is exactly the right word, yeah. I mean, first, you know, you all wanna discuss it and, you know, get a firmer idea of, you know,
That particular point.
Four thousand square feet, or do you want the, the, you know, where, the, the commercial industrial districts? Put together, and so you wouldn't be discussing the twelve-page bylaw in detail, you'd be discussing the, the hot-button issues.
Correct, right, yeah. The highlights.
The highlights.
Right, okay. So let me ask the board, I'm sure Mike wouldn't disagree too much, I think most of them are gonna be there. I'll work with Susan to put together basically something in the ag, no, no, in the business and industrial zones for now, in enclosed building, and work on that kind of word. And of course, we'll clean up all the other details that Joel talked about, you're gonna get some information, we'll work on that one. That's a, that's a much easier topic to correct, okay? So that way for the next, maybe the next time that Susan gets here, we can have something that we can go over, we'll go back and forth a few times with this stuff, and we're just, you and I just hash it out together through emails and stuff to have something kind of a draft.
But before that next meeting, we get that a week or two before, so we can, each member can sit down.
This will not be something we're gonna give you that night, we like to have it like a week or so ahead of time, because, yeah, I agree, you don't wanna have it that night, all of a sudden, what's this?
Right.
Yeah. And even if it's.
Their thinking process is that you would not allow for growth in an agricultural area even though it would be grown internally.
That's correct.
That's, that's to be discussed.
That's to be discussed, that's what we're gonna, you wanna review certain things, like, you know, the indoor facility, we gotta have something to work with before we can start saying, well, yes, I know, to these other things. Because once we get the, the grow facility defined, then we can decide.
Although I think that, I, I thought Lisa's suggestion of limiting it to residential and business districts made a lot of sense, but with the gloss you've added to it that if we don't get something, then all bets are off, that maybe opens it up a bit more, and we may have to. So, no, I, I would say you're, we don't have, we don't have a conclusion yet.
Oh, I understand that, but my sense is that you're beginning now to limit participation to the, the financially sound entrepreneurs and that the craft growers, so to speak, just, just not, not gonna be able to participate.
Well, that.
You've lim, the use of entry is no longer there.
No, I, I don't, I don't agree, I think that based on, I, I have been spinning the agricultural exemption a little differently than Joel put it, but if the fact is that, maybe, maybe that's back on the table for me, then maybe we can, maybe we can work out something like Joe was suggesting, that the craft grower can be limited to the five thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet, whether opened or closed.
Right, and that's more powerful.
As long as we're not opening everything up to hundred thousand square foot operations.
Can you limit a craft marijuana grower to a very small thing?
How many growers?
Yeah, my recollection is it's limited by statute, I think there, somebody either craft or microbusiness is, let's craft, I think it's limited to.
Microbusiness, I think that's limited in size. The craft cooperative can have multiple farmers, but multiple farmers cannot be more collectively than one hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand, so it is microbusiness, it's limited, I think, to five, to tier one.
Okay, so microbusiness, what we're gonna be concentrating on?
To five units? To five thousand square feet.
Okay.
Tier one, so they, again, remembering this concept of canopies, so the regulations have eleven tiers, and tier one is five thousand feet of canopy, the top one is a hundred thousand square feet.
So if there's more than one craft?
Okay, we don't, we don't.
You can't exceed five thousand?
No, craft can go up to a hundred thousand, it's the.
We don't even have micro, wherever it is, okay.
It's the.
But you can fix that.
I don't want a microbusiness.
So that may be a solution to allow micro growers in the agricultural, more broadly.
Two thousand pounds of marijuana per year.
Now, here's what Lisa pointed out, see, here's the definition of microbusiness. Means a co-located, so they have, they have two enterprises going, co-located marijuana establishment that can either be a tier one marijuana cultivator, in other words, they can grow up to five thousand square feet, or product manufacturer, or both, in compliance with the operating procedures for each license. A microbusiness that is a product manufacturer may purchase no more than two thousand pounds of marijuana per year from other establishments. So what it means is they can have the five thousand square foot grow facility and they can bring in as much as two thousand pounds that they will then process.
But above and beyond what they grow?
They grow, but the five thousand square feet, that's, it's the growing that's gonna generate the odor and the lights and all that. The, the processing, I mean, I have no idea how much square footage you need to process two thousand pounds. Presumably, they're not gonna come in all at once, they're gonna come in.
Two thousand pounds, I'm, I'm just thinking of two thousand pounds of tobacco, you could process two thousand pounds of tobacco if, comparing tobacco to marijuana in a place probably not much bigger than your kitchen.
All right, yes, I mean.
It doesn't mean you're not talking.
That's an acre.
That's an acre.
Who's that gonna ask you?
But if you process it over the course of a year, unless you do it all at once, you're talking, you're talking like a bundle of danger.
Well, I have two thousand pounds of pot seized in Boston's biggest marijuana busting memory from two thousand and ten.
That's small.
So apparently it's quite a large amount.
Oh, two thousand pounds is a ton, yeah, but it's not.
A candy jar, four candy jars, about one ounce of marijuana.
But it was the biggest.
You need sixteen.
It's a fair amount.
Yeah.
I agree, it's not, it's not minor, but if you processed it all at once versus a little bit at a time, you're talking a very small processing area.
But what's to prevent them to process it all at once?
Nothing.
Right.
Right, but, and the point is, in that picture, it fits in one room, so in other words, in terms of the footprint of the building for both the grow facility.
I can't imagine somebody that would wanna process that stuff would want to do it all at once, because that takes an awful lot of labor, whereas we processed it, we processed it a little bit at a time over the course of, if you're gonna do it over the course of a year, why not do it over the course of a year just to, to save your, your pocket money and your labor?
But in, in, back to the neighborhood, you probably don't want two thousand pounds coming in to your neighborhood with, you know, the trucks and whatever it takes to process all of that as opposed to.
I think.
I don't know.
That's. Two thousand pounds is only one truck.
Two thousand pounds of marijuana would almost fit, would almost fit in a. 2,000 pounds of marijuana would almost fit in a regular, standard-sized, eight-foot pickup truck.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's not a, that's, it's, that's not a lot.
Sounds like a lot.
Sounds like a lot. The picture looks like a lot, but if you were to put that into a regular, yeah. My opinion is that is, yeah, that's a lot to get caught with illegally, but the process...
Honestly, whenever I hear comments about trucks, I just think of all of the Amazon trucks in my neighborhood. There's nothing anybody's going to come up with that's going to generate as many trucks as Amazon trucks. Not that I'm proposing, I'm just, it's just my bugaboo about Amazon trucks. And being stuck behind them.
Okay, anyways. So, Jim, have we made the distinction indoors, outdoors, or both? Yeah, have we?
I, for one, want to be careful.
I think we're going to start off with an enclosed indoor, with enclosed building indoors. The craft, the microbusiness, we need to look at that one. That one, that one we may be able to allow differently.
So, that's 5,000 square feet, so you're talking, we just made the tobacco barn 11 bins now instead of eight, but...
Why can't we set the number?
We're talking size-wise.
5,000 square feet is slightly more than a tenth of an acre, so you're not really talking about a whole. If you're talking about outdoors, it's not, it's a small block.
We need to, we need to look, we're not going to decide that tonight. What we're looking at, we've got some starting points.
We've got to let Joel get back to it.
Okay.
It's an election, it's a term.
Huh? Yeah.
Where are you going to get back to?
You still live in the Boston area?
Yeah, I came here.
You still do. Would you travel out here frequently?
Regularly.
Regularly.
Actually, I spent the night out here two weeks ago, because I had a 9:00 AM zoning board hearing in Chesterfield.
Oh, geez.
I just want to leave my house in...
Do you have a driver yet?
I know. My wife's retired. I keep telling her I've been needing a driver.
Oh, yeah, that's...
Well, that's all the more reason you need to go to these meetings.
So, you've got to get a driver.
Hey.
Allowing craft growing might be a good safety, or maybe one of the others, one micro, or maybe one of the other tiers. We need to know a little more about that.
We need to learn a lot more about the reg.
I think, I completely share Lisa's concern, because, you know, you see some of the agricultural buildings that can be built there without any restriction. Dairy barn or something like that, those are huge buildings. And we don't necessarily want a commercial project buying up 10 acres and putting up a huge building.
Then how would you stop it?
At the other end, we also don't want to deprive people who want to grow in the farming community the opportunity to grow something.
But there's no sense jumping in feet-first without knowing everything and the repercussion of it.
So, but I'm looking at a hybrid of some sort, like the commercial uses in a commercial district and the craft or micro more broadly distributed.
Get a clear understanding of what that means.
So, that might be a middle ground that kind of deals with what you were saying about, you know, five, five or 6,000 square feet.
We need to define the two and what we can do, and then go from there where we would be putting them. I think, you know, that's a good point.
And one possibility, just for purpose of discussion here, is that if you could allow craft growing, limited to 5,000 square feet hypothetically, and allow that to be done in agricultural areas opposed to business or industrial.
And outdoors, perhaps.
And outdoors, yeah. And then you got the smell that the people, you're complaining about.
Well, I think you can regulate as a board based on location. Is it far enough away so that it isn't... I live on Shattuck Road, too. I did not get the flyer that went out to all of the people who came to the meeting. But I have talked to people, and some of the information in that was not factual. So, you can regulate it based on odor concerns, that they have to take care of that. That can be done in greenhouses. I can get you experts that would testify about that sort of thing. So, I think you could, need to be careful not to, like, for me, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I can go out other places. I'm already in another town. But you should be able to help the farmers and help Hadley itself with revenue that this can generate.
And also not hurt them, because some people just don't like that. So...
But it's got to be more than just emotion. It's got to be...
It's not emotion. It's the real thing.
Yeah, but I heard some things, looking at the tape, which I did view, that it burns your eyes. It doesn't burn your eyes. That it's a noxious odor. It's not a noxious odor if you scrub it. There's a lot of things that can be done, and we, that's why I'm pushing to help farmers in Hadley as well.
Joel, we very much appreciate you coming out here today.
Well, thanks, yeah.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
This was really good to help us with this and get, you know, where we, where we're okay, who are not okay, and why we're not okay.
And we've got to get it done early to get it to your group and get it back to us if there are any questions.
Well, when you guys have a pretty good draft, might be a good time for us to take a look at it then.
Okay. Because then it's on to MS 4.
How is MS 4? Is that, where is that in the laws? Does that take an effect, Joel?
It's, you mean the sewer...
The clean water thing.
Right. It's federal regulation.
Right. That's the water runoff, yeah. That is in effect?
I believe so.
Yeah. We're, even though it's not on our books, we're requiring anybody that comes in for drainage to comply with MS 4, simply because we can't. Okay, but it's not in any of our books, yet we're still under the old stuff, which is terribly out of date. I mean, it's not like we're behind the eight ball. The highway department is actually in pretty good condition to be in compliance with it. So, it's really the general and zoning bylaws that we need to address.
The rollout, if I remember correctly, was based on sizes of communities, but I imagine...
Yeah, yeah. Because of where we were, especially with, it has a lot to do with combined sewers, obviously. And that's why some of the, well, the cities around here, Springfield, Holyoke, they're... Springfield, Chickaby's been separating their sewers now for about the last, what did the guy say with the last, the MS 4 meeting that we went to as a seminar?
Yeah.
Chickaby has spent something like $200 million separating their sewers, and they've got, like...
Knocked the sewer from the drainage.
Right, so they're combined. They were combined, combined. And they, they're about, I think, I'm going to take a roll-off, like, well, don't quote me, but somewhere around 75% complete, but it's going to take about 350 million more to the last 25%, because I guess that's where it's way more difficult.
Hadley never had a combination sewer.
Yeah.
Yes, more urbanized areas.
Yeah.
What's been happening, the separation's been happening in Boston area for 20 years.
That is so nasty. It's just like, where do you start and where is the finish?
So, do we want to look at first Tuesday of December to meet with you again?
Yes.
About which?
About this one.
About this?
About this one, yeah. So, we want to, we'd like to, like, you know, the color may want to move on this a little bit faster so that we're not waiting until April, and we're going to, you know...
So, do you want to take a first step at this, or...
What I think I would like to have you do is do the cleanup that Joel talked about. You took notes on that, right?
And it's going to pass, I think.
It can you do?
Yeah, I mean, like, mostly things that he hasn't decided.
I will work on putting words together for defining the grow facility and where, and set backs and stuff like that. And then between us, we can put it together. Don't worry about the physical stuff. Don't worry about the physical section. I will take care of the physical, what do we call it? Location and, no, physical requirements I will take care of, and location.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, yeah.
And then you just do, like, clean up the other ones. And the front page, I wouldn't do much with yet, because we may be changing that quite a bit when we decide where it could be done.
Yeah, I mean, there's no harm in leaving them in. Lisa made a good point about the... Although, as I said, you are, might as well leave them in now and see if you're regulating anything differently. For instance, it turns out you might be regulating microbusiness differently.
Right.
So, probably worth, for now, leaving it in and see where you end up. All right, see you all again.
Are we a jury? No, we got one thing to do.
You are a juror.
We have one invoice, and I'm not sure. I got a check in town. We got an invoice from the Gazette that we are finally up to date. All of the old past due, my God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Susan.
All right.
Good night.
Thanks very much.
Good night, thank you. That we had one, I thought we were up to date on the card, but evidently the Gazette had a $210 and 10 cent invoice from 10th and 8th that I need to find out from the town accountant if we paid it or not.
Are we all set with that, or are you still...
No, we're all set with the old stuff. All done. All done. Only six months.
Thank God.
How much is it?
210, 210 and 10 cents. So, I'll make it, I will make it in a motion to, if needed, I will check to pay $210 and 10 cents.
I'll make a motion to pay 210 for the Gazette if outstanding.
Second.
Have a favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Then we got a, a travel...
Where was supposed to be Joel's?
My Mr. Sarsinski and Mr. Michikowski attended a seminar.
At Holy Cross.
At Holy Cross. The fee for each was $25, for total of 50. And then there was another mileage of $61 and 4 cents. Total invoice of 111 dollars and 4 cents.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reimburse Michikowski and Sarsinski...
No, it's just Sarsinski paid it.
He paid everything?
Yeah.
Okay, 11104.
Sarsinski, 11104. Okay, for the seminar.
Any motion? Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You have the authorized signature. That would be me, huh?
So, I did have one question that has come up. Wesley Methodist Church, remember, we did a very small subdivision for them a number of years ago, probably about six or seven years ago. One was going to be a property under Shaw Lane, and one was a property more adjacent to the church. And they are now interested in liquidating both of those. I got a call from the building inspector that, gee, it's been a long time. Should we look at that again? I did take a look at the decision. It was a, you know, standard, very small subdivision. Approved two lots, got conservation restrictions on two larger parcels. In fact, I think, Lisa, you might have been on the board then. There was some confusion over whether there was an eight-year, whether the use was waived or went stale after eight years. And for a residential subdivision, I don't believe that to be the case. There is a clause that says that zoning changes its grandfather for eight years, but I don't think we have to revisit it now that they're going to sell it.
No, not that I can, and that eight-year clause, only if it was approved prior to 1970 or something. There was a timeframe in there.
They're going to sell it for two building lots, or...
Yeah.
Yes, yes, they're selling separately. One's at the End of Shaw Lane, one comes off of North Maple. It's practically off of the church parking lot.
Yeah, there's something at the end of the street that wasn't, it was like no other subdivision, and then we added one or something.
Right.
Something like that.
Yeah, Shaw Lane was like a six-lot subdivision, and this had frontage on the cul-de-sac. We just extended the roadway slightly and gave them one more lot back in there. So, yeah, I'm not aware of any sunset clause. We didn't, we usually don't put anything in.
No.
So, okay.
I got a question on this Berkshire Design Report dated October 25. Aren't they supposed to include the drainage? Because you create more parking, you create more blocktop, you create more water, and it's supposed to do that, and they didn't. So, we got a meeting coming up.
Well, they have less roof space.
But they get more parking, so, you know, but...
They have less, they might have put in eight parking spaces. But if you've got less roof, you've got 2,000 square feet less roof.
Well, I mean, just to clear it with them, to ask them so they can address that. They didn't address that in there. Give it up. Just as long as they address it in there, don't you think?
Just to say that, yeah, even if they just had a comment in there that there's no change...
No detrimental change.
No, no change in previous area.
You know, I would like to have a discussion about the senior center project and what went south on it. I feel the whole blame goes right to the architect and the OPM. Our bylaws are clear and simple, and yet no one came in front of you. You three are the authors of our parking bylaw. You guys put that together. There was no attempt, no one from either the architect's side or the OPM's side to address that directly to you guys. And they had their interpretation, the selectmen had their interpretation, and I entrusted what you guys said, and that's what I believe in, because you guys were the authors of that bylaw. And in the contract of the, of the architect, on Article 4, Section 4.1, this is what it says, "The designer shall perform the work required under this agreement, including AIA Document B201-207, attached in conformity with all requirements and standards of the awarding authority, all applicable laws, statutes, ordinances, bylaws, codes, rules, and regulations, and executive orders of the Commonwealth and its political subdivisions and federal government. The Constitution documents shall comply with all applicable laws, statutes, ordinance, bylaws, codes, rules, and regulations, and executive orders. The designer, including all approved consultants and subcontractors, shall comply with all applicable provisions of rules and regulations of the President." Now, why I'm saying this, in the years past, I worked on projects that they sued the architect and sued whoever designed the project. And they were threatened to take them to court. and sued whoever designed the project. And they were threatened to take them to court. Number one, a designer or the OPM does not want a lawsuit or black mark against them. And I'm sick and tired of people saying, well, it's this planning board's fault. This planning board, as long as I've been on here with you guys, every project that came in here in front of this board was scrutinized into detail. Why all of a sudden that this has to be rubber stamped and not scrutinized? And how does it end up that we're responsible for the OPM and the, and the architect not following the laws? And yet on top of this, what is, I have no problem now with the selectmen ordering them to downsize them. And they ordered them to downsize for what? To comply with zoning. So if they came to here, come to this board and defined the parking, they wouldn't have made all these mistakes and all these errors. And on top of it, they're requesting a hundred and roughly a $47,000 in change orders for something they should have done and should have known because they got paid well for that. That's why we hire architects. That's why the state mandates that you, the towns, uh, hire an OPM, own as project manager, protect their town. That's what they're protect. The way I look at it, protection like this, the hell I want protection like this for? When it costs you twice as much to get something done and look at all the time this wasted. Had they complied, they would have been in, as far as I'm concerned, they would have been under construction in June. And there's no question about that. This should have not dragged off, but people, I want people to know out there, don't look here at this board of, of the fault, of this board in delays. Look at the select lord, look at the, uh, building committee, and look at these two, the architect and this OPM. They're the culprits that are involved in this. And I already called the inspector general's office today. I didn't get a call back, and the AG's office on it. I'm going to follow it through because I think what they're doing is ripping our taxpayers off. And I, I certainly would like some comment from you guys, the authors of this bylaw.
The architect clearly goofed on the parking requirement. And you're right, they never asked us, what does the parking mean? How do you do this? Many, many other developers have come in here ahead of time and says, if they don't understand something, um, go back many times, you know? What do you think? What do you think? What do you think? A lot of, you know, how many times have people come in as a walk-in, we want to do this, what do you think? And these people have got some bad information and ran with it and never questioned it.
And 20 years ago, you three sat on this board when the elementary school came here and the public safety, uh, came through here. How come there was no problems with those two? And that was a $7.1 million project. How come there was no problems with that?
I don't remember who the OPM or the architect was, but.
But there was no problems with that.
No problem that I can remember.
Both of those projects went on target, went on schedule, and there was no problems with it. Why all of a sudden, uh, make these two major projects, there's all kind of trouble? The three of you sat on them and the three you sat here now.
We have worked from, for as long as I've been on the board to, uh, be as accessible as we can be, given that we don't have any paid staff, which is why, um, the town clerk, back to Joanna Devine days, was giving out my phone number and Jim's phone number if someone called and asked for the planning board. And Jim and I both have our numbers on the, uh, town, uh, website. And all of the planning board email comes to me. And frankly, apart from some very minor questions about how many copies of the application do we need to file, um, we didn't have any substantive contact from the architect or the OPM prior to the, uh, prior to the application actually being filed. And I know that Jim went to one meeting and, uh, made multiple comments to the, uh, the presenters. That was January, maybe?
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, basically ignored, I think.
They, they did, well, this is what we're going to do and this is what we're going to do. They, do you have any better, we don't have the drawings yet. We don't have the drawings yet.
For the people, for the people of the audience, what is the purpose of this board? What do they protect and why do they protect? What is the purpose of this planning board? Who's it protect?
Citizens of the town it happens.
And its properties.
Yeah.
And its properties to the fullest. There's no question about it. So I just want to make sure that the note is out there that this board works hard to protect its town. All of us have been voted by the people of this town, and that's who we protect, their rights and the towns' rights. But this senior center got a raw deal. They probably didn't understand all the mechanisms behind this and just went with the flow. The selectmen, they did nothing but rubber stamp it. They would have never, ever ordered them to downsize to come into, into, uh, compliance unless we didn't force them. That's all I have to say. I don't like it. And I'll tell you what, I'm going to pursue this with the attorney general and the inspector general.
Do you want to pick them back, Lisa? Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.